Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this February 8th, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. We will start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to the council, to the staff who are with us tonight, and to members of the public watching as well. Thanks for joining us. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Present. All seven members of the Bloomington City Council are with us this evening. Brings us to item number three on our agenda, the approval of the agenda. Council, do we have any additions, subtractions, or modifications to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I would look for action to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loman, to approve the evening's agenda. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We have an official agenda for this evening's meeting. Move to item four on our agenda, our public comment period. This is the twenty-minute period at these council meetings, where we allow up to five minutes for members of the public to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And we start, as we always do, with item four point one, which is a response to prior meeting's comments. Mr. Verbrugge, I don't believe we had anyone comment, did we?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. No response to public comment this week.
So we can move then straight into item four point two, which is the public comment period. As I said, a twenty-minute period. Residents or callers can have up to five minutes to comment on things not on tonight's agenda. It will be a five-minute, the five-minute limit will be enforced, just to make sure everybody has an equal amount of time. And as we've said in the past, the, we will not be responding or commenting on any of the comments from callers. We'll just respond to them at the next council meeting when Mr. Verbrugge will step forward with answers to any questions that the people might have. So with that, Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone who would like to speak tonight on item four point two, our public comment period?
Hello, Lyndon. This is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris.
Do we have any callers that wish to speak to the council on Agenda Item four point two?
No comments at this time. Please continue.
Do we have any callers on the line?
None at this time.
Alrighty. Thank you.
We have no callers on the line, and so with that, I will close their public comment period. And we'll move on to item five, our introductory items, and item five point one, which is a proclamation for Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. Kind of fitting that matters of the heart are called upon here in February, and we do have a proclamation, and I will read it now. Proclamation for Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week, February seventh through February fourteenth, 2021. Whereas congenital heart defect awareness week takes place in February as part of the American Heart Month, and whereas the well-being of our community is of paramount importance to the city of Bloomington, and maintaining excellent health on our community is a top priority. And whereas congenital heart defects are the most frequently occurring birth defect and the leading cause of birth defect-related deaths in the United States, nearly forty thousand infants are born each year with congenital heart defects. And whereas in the United States, heart disease is the leading cause of death for both men and women. And whereas in the United States, there are an estimated seven hundred and twenty new incidents of heart attacks and three hundred and thirty-five thousand recurrent heart attacks. And whereas ninety thousand, or excuse me, whereas ninety percent of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease or stroke. And whereas eighty percent of heart disease and strokes may be prevented by lifestyle changes and education. And whereas congenital heart defect awareness week and American Heart Month provide an opportunity for families whose lives have been affected to celebrate life and to remember loved ones lost, to honor dedicated health professionals, and to know they are not alone. And whereas congenital heart defect awareness week during American Heart Month will also provide the opportunity to educate our community about living a heart-healthy lifestyle. Therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim February seventh through February fourteenth, 2021, as Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week in Bloomington, and call on all residents to focus on their hearts during American Heart Month and always. I think sometimes, over the past year, we have maybe lost sight of some of the more important health aspects going on beyond COVID-19, but obviously, a healthy heart is one of them. And we have with us tonight to speak regarding this proclamation, Vicky Hugim, who is an HRA Commissioner, brought forward this proclamation for us. Good evening, Ms. Hugim, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I would like to thank the Mayor, Council, and especially city staff for working together on this proclamation. This proclamation means so much to not only me, but so many other in our community and throughout the country. I was born with a congenital heart defect, CHD, called complete heart block. I depend on a pacemaker to keep my heart in normal rhythm, and I have also been diagnosed with HL flutter due to the design of my heart. I have undergone many surgeries and procedures, as there is no cure for my condition, as with most CHDs. Heart disease is the number-one killer in both men and women, and affects one in four men and one in three women. These are alarming numbers, but with education, resources, research, and proper diagnosis, we can hope for a brighter future. With this proclamation, Bloomington is being active in participating and not only educating our community, but acknowledging those who are affected. I would like to take this moment to send my thoughts to all those who have lost someone to CHD and heart disease, and to also celebrate the survivors. Mostly, I would like to thank the city of Bloomington for this important proclamation and recognizing this week as Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. With this proclamation, the city of Bloomington is taking a step closer to this solution, and I'm truly honored to be part of this community. Thank you.
And we thank you very much for your activism and your passion and your work on this. Thank you very much, Ms. Hugim, for bringing this forward and having us make it part of our official record here in the city of Bloomington. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, any questions or anything to add? If not, thank you, Ms. Hugim. Appreciate it. We will move to item five point two on our agenda, which is the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission Work Plan for 2021. It's the time of year where we, the council, review a number of work plans and past-year reviews from our boards and commissions. I think we did the Planning Commission last week. We've got Park this week, and I'm sure we'll be looking at others as well. I think we, the Sustainability Commission also, we looked at. So I wanted to bring this forward, and we have with us tonight the Chair of our park, which is Stephanie Tongseth. Good evening, Ms. Tongseth, and the Vice Chair, which is Laura Perro. Good evening to both of you, and welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for having us. We look forward to presenting for you tonight. So thank you, Mayor Bussie and City Council for having us. Laura and I will be going through this, but we want to thank our other commissioners who are not here tonight as well. We really rely on them, and we wish we all could present for you. So going through our 2020 accomplishments for the park. As always, we had our Parks and Rec Annual Award of Excellence. This award is done in recognition and grateful appreciation of someone who's given continuous community service and demonstrated steadfast dedication to the advancement of our Parks, Arts, and Recreation programs and the facilities in Bloomington. This year, we reviewed a total of nine nominations for six different nominees. And after a difficult decision, we awarded Joe Rath as a recipient this year. He, and I want to do a little plug for him. He's had decades of service at Bush Lake and helps everyone with the safety, cleaning, maintenance, and all just for the benefit of the community and for making sure that it's a safe place for families to go. And very interestingly, he puts up flags for the various people to represent where they are from and the diversity and inclusion at Bush Lake. So we'd like to thank him again. The second big thing we did is we participated in the cultural arts review of the support grants. Each year, we review applications for the cultural arts grants, and we provide funding recommendations. It's always great to have a presenter, so we had Lee Hughes from the Center for the Arts Manager to come to the commission and give us their recommendations. And then there's a committee that reviews everything, which is one park member. So that's Anne Marie Tapstra from our commission, city staff, and community members. And so that's a really big process, and we're happy to give these grants to various organizations, which are historically the resident arts orgs. That includes, and I'll run through the list really quick so they all get credit, Angelica Cantanti Youth Choirs, Artistry Bloomington Choral, Bloomington City Symphony Orchestra, the Continental Ballet Company, the Metalist Band, and the Notables Singers, which all do some really great things. And then we have our Parks Master Plan, which is an ongoing thing since the fall of 2019. Probably, everybody's heard about it, and the park staff have been really great at keeping us involved and allowing us to participate and give feedback, and it's been a really great thing for everyone, I hope. The Park System Master Plan, as we all know, is the roadmap for planning and completing the park improvements, and to really help the city overall decide where we should focus our resources and our investments to fit our big and long-term goals for the community. We've been considering, along with staff, they've put together some great local and national surveys to follow Parks and Rec trends, the community demographics, what our facility needs are, the cure and future programming needs, maintenance, long-term sustainability, and then also getting community feedback. And that's been a really big thing and a challenge, I know, especially during COVID times, is the community engagement. They did Project Bloom earlier in 2020, and the work is just ongoing. And then, most recently, we, as a commission, have each been given assignments to help work with some of our consultant teams as we work on this master plan and capital investment planning. And so hopefully, the commission will be able to give some really relevant feedback in more specific areas such as finance, organization, structure, partnerships, program management, facility management, and equity. And overall, we've just been really involved in helping the staff as we evaluate the current park system and what our vision is going forward as a city, and what we can do to fix some gaps that might be in the park system.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. On behalf of the Park Commission, I am excited to share with you our 2021 Parks and Recreation Initiatives. First on the list, we were looking to make some improvements at Dred Scott, improving the lighting and fencing, as well as some updates to the tennis court. We will be replacing the Herbeck Field dugouts. These dugouts are aging, and we are very fortunate that we have received a lot of grant funding in order to help offset some of the cost of replacing these. We have $415,000 in grant funding and a $550,000 estimated project cost. $300,000 are coming from the Hennepin County Youth Sports Facility Grant. $75,000 is coming from the Twins Youth Facility Grant, and $40,000 has been committed to the project from our various associations and leagues. Also on the list for 2021 is our Bloomington Ice Garden renovation planning project. We'll be focused on planning for this year. Council will be receiving a presentation from HGA in March, where they will be presenting options for potential renovation, as well as the estimated costs. The commission is also working on the Bloomington Center for the Arts Capital Improvement Projects. We are looking to make improvements at the Black Box Theater with some renovations, as well as the Snyder Theater speaker and sound system updates, lighting system updates, as well as replacing some soft goods with the scrim and the curtains. Finally, on this list, Highland Greens, we're looking to do a partnership with Three Rivers Park District. At the January council meeting, council-directed city staff to work with the staff from Three Rivers Park District to develop a cooperative agreement with, for the management, operation, and maintenance of Highland Greens Golf and Learning Center. The intent of this partnership was to begin in 2021 season. And as a commission, we're really excited about working towards a partnership to bring back and share updates with the council. Three Rivers Park District brings operational and programming expertise. They will help relieve financial burden of golf course operations at Highland, as well as, we're excited at the possibility that Bloomington residents will be able to maintain access to this highly-valued community amenity. So looking at our 2021 Commission Work Plan, I will speak to the first half of it, and then Stephanie will share more. We will be continuing our ongoing responsibilities, as well as some initiatives that we've done historically year over year. The first being our Bloomington Park and Facility Tours. This is our ongoing familiarization with our city parks and our facilities. This is definitely something that the commission hopes that we can do safely in person this year. If that is not an option, I know we will be flexible and creative and find a virtual way to gain access and visit our parks and facilities. Some of those facilities that we'd be visiting would be the Bloomington Ice Garden, the Bloomington Center for Arts, Dewan Golf Course, and Creekside Community Center. It's really important for the commission to get out into the field, see our parks, see our facilities. It really helps us connect to the big picture, understand our operating budgets, assess needs and see opportunities, and really see all of our hard work come to life by seeing completed projects and seeing the impact that we have on the community. Along with other ongoing responsibilities, Stephanie already spoke to us a little bit, but we will continue our Cultural Arts Support Grant funding review and recommendations. So we will be appointing one commissioner from the Park Commission to take part in this process and allocate the $180,000 in grant funding for these grants. Additionally, we will be, another ongoing responsibility is reviewing our budget fees and our capital improvement plan review. This is an ongoing responsibility, and in Q2, we plan to review and comment on our ten-year capital improvement plan. Stephanie will speak to this a little bit more in our Park System Master Plan, but our capital improvement plan will focus on new amenities and locations of major park renovations. In quarter four, the commission will review our 2022 fees and charges and make recommendations for any changes. Finally, looking at park planning and park projects. For the planning projects we'll be working on in 2021, we'll be reviewing plans for a Dewan clubhouse replacement, the Three Rivers Park District Joint Partnership that I already spoke to for Highland Greens, as well as a Bryant Park renovation. For park projects, I've covered a lot already this evening, but in addition to that, we'll be looking at a joint school playground update at both Normandale Hills and Washburn, as well as the Bush Lake Swim Area Project.
And then, to wrap up our 2021 work plan, jumping back to our assistance with the 2021 Park System Master Plan. This year, we'll have a lot of focus on jointly working with the Sustainability Commission to make sure that sustainability continues to be discussed and defined within our Park System Master Plan. We're going to be a little flexible on that, so we can touch on issues as they come up, and there's some great collaboration that we plan to do with them. In terms of equity, we're really looking, and this kind of comes back to the capital improvement plan and planning, as well as talking about design standards. With the capital improvement plan and planning, we're going to continue to participate and provide feedback. As Laura briefly touched on it, what we're looking to do is create a plan that provides a guiding framework for capital investments and design standards for certain park improvements. And not detailed or park-specific, but kind of what we're looking for across the board. And so the staff have presented service area boundaries. And so we'll be working within that to figure out what, to highlight facilities where we might, we as a community may be underserved or overserved, and creating a better equity and balance throughout the park system for all of our community members. And then also implementing design standards that we can use in order to make sure that we're following trends and keeping up with what's actually being used, and also to make sure that our parks are well-serviced. We're also going to continue to use the vision, mission, and guiding principles that we developed with the staff as part of this Park Master Plan to continue to give input and facilitate our ongoing discussions towards this common goal. And that pretty much wraps it up for the night, but before we go, I'd like to, Laura, thank you so much for presenting with me. She knows I was a little anxious about this. And I'd like to also really thank our staff for their hard work dealing with all these challenges that 2020 dealt us, from switching to the WebEx meetings and adjusting how we conduct community engagement to make sure that everyone's voices are heard during this Park Master Plan process. It's, they've been really, really great and hardworking, and then I want to give a big shout-out to their work on the CARES Act grants that they got. They secured a lot of money for funding programs for youth and families to give them a variety of free programming and assistance with all these cuts due to COVID. Over the last, since summer, when we received the grant, they have been able to offer a variety of programming, and I think they deserve a lot of credit for always keeping the community in mind. And so with that, I will, Laura, I will let you say anything else. Otherwise, I'd like to thank, thank you all for having us tonight.
Well, and thank you. Appreciate, absolutely appreciate the work of the Park Commission. You've done excellent work in a difficult time, and I think so much of the COVID-related impacts on the city, a good chunk of it did land on park-related programs and park items and issues. So appreciate the leadership that the park showed, and appreciate, obviously, the staff's work on so many things to lead us through a lot of these difficult times, and appreciate your aggressive look toward the future as well, because I think there is a lot to do, and especially looking forward to the work on the Park System Master Planning, and really looking forward to see where that whole process takes us and heads us toward the future. Council, questions? You're very welcome. Questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question here. When you, when you say one of the projects includes something with the Bush Lake Swim Area, could you just tell me a little bit more about that? What does that entail, at least as far as you know it?
Susan, I'll look to you if you have some more details to share.
Yeah. So Director Catry, are you also on the call?
I believe she is. Just give her one second here. We will
Okay.
get her involved.
I'm going to let Ann answer this particular question.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of the council. The Bush, the Bush Lake Beach Plan is a design of the swimming area of the beach to ensure that when we're operating in a no lifeguard scenario, that we're providing as safe a swimming environment as we possibly can. So we'll be looking at everything from how the swim area is delineated, how big it is, you know, again, looking at the swim platforms and all of those sorts of things. So it'll be a major relook, just to ensure that we're providing a safe swimming environment.
Okay, thank you.
I see Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a follow-up question to that. So as we have, you know, as we had the budget conversations last year, and when the Seaback was meeting to develop different kinds of proposals and ideas for where we can make cuts, one of the ideas that was generated related to lifeguards at the beach was exploring conversations with Three Rivers, I believe. I don't think I'm making this up. And I am curious if staff and if the park has thought about that. I do, I think that's probably one of the decisions that was made that bothers me the most and kind of keeps me up sometimes, thinking about not having lifeguards at the beach as a frequenter of the beach with young kids myself. And so I'm just wondering if you could speak to that. And I do appreciate that you called out a specific project to assess safety and to make sure that we are doing all that we can in that area.
Councilmember Carter, Mayor, members of the council, we do intend to have a conversation with Three Rivers Park District on possibly taking over operations of Bush Lake Beach and the entire Bush Lake Park. So no, Councilmember Carter, you didn't, you didn't imagine that. We do intend to have those conversations. We've really been focusing on the Highland Greens Golf Course project right now. And I anticipate that the conversations will evolve into conversations about further partnerships moving forward, probably pretty quickly. That's my goal. I do want to point out, however, Councilmember Carter, that the Three Rivers Park District also operates all of their beach facilities, with the exception of their chlorinated beaches, also without lifeguards. So I just want to put that out there. I don't want to give folks the expectation that if the operation is taken over by Three Rivers Park District that it would have lifeguards. Again, we haven't had those conversations, but I'm guessing, based on some of their other operations, that they might operate it without lifeguards as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. So otherwise, I don't have any additional questions, but I do want to thank Stephanie and Laura for your presentation and all of the work that you've been doing on the park, the park board. It's a lot of work. It's a volunteer position, and it's critical to the success of the work that we do as a community. And so I'm really grateful to you and all of the commissioners that have been serving. It's a, it's a lot of work. It's a volunteer position and it's critical to the success of the work that we do as a community, and so I'm really grateful to you and all of the commissioners that have been serving.
Councilmember Loman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to just, uh, you know. Kind of join the course of, uh, folks thanking the, uh, the commission and the leaders of the commission and the staff for the work they've done. Know as we look further down on our agenda and we get to our priorities. As a council, uh, we'll see examples of their of their work themselves. I hope that the council itself will continue to work towards around synergies when it comes to Highland. Greens Park, uh, uh, initiative where they work with Three Rivers. We're also, uh, kind of bringing together two, uh, commissions when we talk about, uh, the the parks and also sustainability. I think these are great examples of how we are trying to push the boundaries of, uh, of what we do here in the city of Bloomington, and I I just want to again. You know, Mayor, as you have said, uh, very eloquently at the beginning of this, uh, thank you for your hard work and I look forward to seeing. What next year's work plan looks like after this year. You really bit off a lot here and we'll see what, uh, if you can chew down on it. So thank you, guys.
Council, additional questions? If not, uh, this was a presentation of their work plan and, uh, they are asking us to approve the work plan for this year, so. I would, uh, look for action on item five point two.
Mayor, I would ha, I'd be happy to move the approval of their work plan, the park work plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Coulter to approve the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission twenty twenty one work plan. Council, further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So Chair Tung Seth, Vice Chair Pearl, thank you so very much. Thanks for your work. Thanks for being with us tonight. Thanks for the presentation and, uh, again, looking forward to. The work that you've got planned in twenty twenty one.
To all of you.
And, uh, thanks also to, uh, the our park staff, Ms. Catry and and others on the park. Department staff, uh, outstanding work as always, so thank you so very much. We will move on to item six on our agenda, which is our consent business. Councilmember Beloga has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I've heard from all of the city council members, but I'll do one last check in. Does anyone have any holds? Second call, any holds? Not seeing anyone responding. There are nine items on the agenda tonight, uh, for consent. And I will move items six point one through six point nine for approval.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept our consent business, item six point one through six point nine. Council, further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item seven on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions and ordinances and item seven point one. An affirmation of emergency actions undertaken by our city manager. As you all know, we are working under a resolution which, uh, we've invoked, which, uh, it invokes the city's emergency operations plan and pandemic response plan. Part of that resolution grants emergency provisions both to our our emergency operations director, Chief Hugh Lee Seal and our city manager, Mr. Verbrugge. And part of that is, uh, we come together every now and again to, uh, ratify, affirm and adopt the the actions that have taken place, so. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just one item on the, uh, actions, uh, this this week. It is the, um, uh, suspension of a requirement in our opportunity housing ordinance. That directs an annual review of the payment in Lou. Talk, uh, the consultant that was going to assist us with this. Indicated that is more common to review this every several years, so we are about to do an opportunity housing ordinance update. And, um, we thought that rather than engage the consultant at this time, it'd be appropriate to do it as part of that review shortly, so. That's the only item on the on the list today. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, are there any questions? Hearing none. Council, uh, we do need to, um, pass a resolution affirming the emergency actions undertaken by our city manager. It's item seven point one. Look for a motion.
So move, Councilmember Loman.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Beloga. To, uh, approve, ratify, affirm and and adopt the actions taken by the city manager under the authority stated in resolution number twenty twenty dash one eighty two. I see a question. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was struggling to find the button there, but, um, I I guess my question is. Is this a one time delay due to the pandemic? Or is this an ongoing change that we're going to review this less frequently in the future than we had originally planned?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, it's actually both. Made a little bit more difficult to engage the consultant right now. But the the feedback is that this is not something we want to do on an annual basis, so we will be looking at it as part of our opportunity housing update.
All right, that is something that, uh, I would prefer to have a little bit more conversation about, um, because I know when we passed this, it was important to review it to check. Current market conditions, what, um, uh, any changes, any issues that staff is hearing about or seeing in it. You know, I guess the thing I'd encourage us to look at is maybe not a. Full blown review, but at least a check in once a year, and I think that was also an important thing is. You know, give it getting a recap on what activity there was, what was in the pipeline, that type of stuff, so. You know, I'm fine. I get the pandemic and the difficulty of of this. I I don't know if this is the right vehicle to change going into the future that timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, it's a good point. It's not a foregone conclusion that we will change the. The, um, uh, period of by which we do the review. But when we bring the other opportunity housing ordinance, uh, items forward for consideration, this will likely be one that's among them. And you can make that decision at that time. If the council chooses not to, then we would, uh, take up that annual review as soon as. The market allows us to do so and the the conditions we're in.
That sounds great. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Nelson. Good question. Good point. Council, additional questions? We have a motion and a second on the table regarding item seven point one, which is affirms the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager. Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We're on to item eight on our agenda, which is our organizational business. And item eight point one is the draft Lyndale Avenue retrofit strategy, something we've been talking about. A while here, and I know that the planning team and our consultants have been working on this and they are going to. Bring forward their their draft strategy with, uh, for us tonight. We've got, uh, from Stan Tech, we've got Beth Elliott and Jason Besky, but, uh, I believe Barb Wolf and Julie Farnham from the planning department. Are going to kick this off for us if I'm not mistaken. I may be mistaken.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to let our operator go for the.
Oh, yes, please, if you could.
That would be appropriate now. Give me one moment. Lyndon, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, Chris.
We are done with items that involve public comment tonight, so thank you for your assistance and you can go ahead and disconnect from the meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndon. Have a good evening. All right, with that, let's get to item eight point one, our draft Lyndale Avenue retrofit strategy. Barb Wolf, Julie Farnham from our planning department are going to kick this off for us. Good evening, Ms. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, you you already did a terrific job of, uh, introducing us. I've been serving as the project manager on the Lyndale Avenue retrofit. And, um, as you've stated, we've been before you a few times over the course of the project. This evening, uh, Beth Elliott and Jason Besky are here to introduce the draft plan. We're really looking for some reactions, some discussions, some feedback, uh, this evening. We were before the planning commission last month and those comments from the planning commission are included in your packet. Uh, we do have a number of staff on the line to answer specific questions to the city if they do come up. But otherwise, I will just turn it right over to Jason and Beth. Thank you.
Jason and Beth, good evening. Welcome. Good to see you again. Thanks for coming back and, uh, thanks for your work on this. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thanks, everybody, for having us. I think Jason is going to share his screen. Great. Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So, um, uh, we have been before you. Uh, I'm Beth Elliott. I'm with Stan Tech. I'm in our Minneapolis office. Jason, do you want to introduce yourself again real quick?
Sure. Uh, hi, I'm Jason Besky. I've been project manager alongside Beth on this one. I'm in the Washington DC region, but, uh, Beth and I work on a lot of projects nationwide and we hope we brought some of that learning, uh, to this project. So thanks for having us.
So a as Barb mentioned, thank you for having us. Um, as Barb mentioned, uh, we are here to, uh, describe the full strategy. The draft strategy with you tonight, and we would love to have discussion as we go. We have a short presentation. By design and which allows for some opportunities, uh, at interim points to ask particular questions of you to make sure we're on the right track. And then, um, as next steps after this discussion, we will make revisions to the draft strategy and then. And it will go through the approval process to both the planning commission and you as a council body. So, uh, Jason, can you flip it, please? Thank you. We, the last time we were here during the summer, we talked to you about a vision for the corridor and we got some feedback and revised the vision. This vision, uh, for suburban retrofitting of Lyndale Avenue really talks about trying to create a cohesive. Character and brand for the corridor. I will say that we've talked to many people throughout this process, as you know, including businesses. And a lot of this is the community and the businesses seeing themselves in this whole cohesive corridor. Of course, um, primary priority for us and for you is to make sure that the results of this plan are equitable and safe for. All the neighborhoods around the corridor as well as new residents that might come to the corridor. We, uh, uh, heard loud and clear throughout the process from you, the plan commission and the community. That, uh, this is about preserving Bloomington's unique history. This was one of the original, you know, main streets in Bloomington. But that the community really is desiring more places to gather, and I think that the the pandemic over the last year has really solidified. A lot of the recommendations that we're going to be showing you tonight, particularly that. That desire to have places to see your neighbors and be outside. And of course, having local restaurants and shopping destinations nearby. And another benefit of, uh, this plan and our recommendations, particularly in relation to the river. Is that we really want nature to meet business. This is not just about. A bunch of new density, uh, along this corridor. This is about connections to existing parks. It's about new spaces to gather. It's about green space. It's about trees. It's about a lot of these things that we desire, particularly in the the dead of winter, right? So, um, that's really what this vision is about for Lyndale Avenue. What is a retrofit strategy? You know, this is something that Jason and I, uh, really tried to work on in many cases throughout the country. To try to, um, revitalize and redevelop, uh, uh, commercial corridors in ways that really fits. That that community, and so a big part of that is. Developing a plan that shapes the future, is future thinking, um, has a vision and principles, but that is really actionable. Has those strategies to realize that vision. And of course, a big part of that is to evaluate quarters like Lyndale. And position them for redevelopment. We wouldn't be doing this plan. If you as a city council had prioritized the revitalization of Lyndale and much of that is because you're already seeing interest. And so this plan is how is meant to give you guidance, uh, your staff guidance and the community a vision for what we can achieve on this corridor. And we have talked to you a lot about the community engagement that occurred. This, you know, luckily, all of the community engagement for this process, uh, happened. Before the shutdowns in the spring. If you recall, one of the last major events we had. Was a Design Week charrette, um, in the Clover Center, uh, a vacant liquor store. And it was such a cool, successful event. It was really inspiring. And, uh, it kind of capped off a lot of activities that we had done and particularly your staff had done in a variety of venues. And some of the key takeaways that we've talked about this with you over the summer, but just as reminders. The community really desires multiple ways to travel along Lyndale. And that's not just by car, even though cars are an important way to do that, so we want to try, uh, uh, provide more opportunities. The public really, really talked about their favorite small, uh, small businesses. If you recall. We had a hidden gems exercise with our, uh, public artist on our team, Monica Sheets, where we asked people to put. A gem sticker in the place that, uh, they, uh, most desire to stay. That was really the heart of the corridor. We heard a lot about the small businesses during that exercise. Expanding housing options is a big part of what we heard as well, creating more parks and green spaces and of course, fun activities for families. People are always looking for opportunities to, um, go hang out, uh, not just with their kids, but with their friends, and so that's a lot of what we heard.
All right, I'll pick up here for now. Um, so as the basis of the the retrofit strategy. There were two analyses that were, uh, conducted to look at housing and the retail features along the corridor. Uh, so we have, uh, two analyses. One was the, uh, Bloomington Forecast Tracker, which you may be aware of, that looks at. Recent trends and what's been happening in the community, uh, based on, uh, development interest and so on and so forth. And then as part of our analysis, uh, from the consulting team, we had what is called the emerging market projection. And this projection is based on a, uh, in this, in this case, a corridor. Uh, that has a, let's say it has a catalytic development, uh, one particular development occurs and things get underway. And these emerging trends that we're seeing, demographic changes, people's living preferences. Really looks at what that market would then, uh, born out. So when we look at these two analyses together, what we are kind of, uh, considering, uh, based on how much development activity does get going along the corridor in the short term. Approximately one thousand units, a little less than a thousand units, anywhere from the next five to fifteen years. And, you know, a lot of this is based on economics and interest in the corridor. But one thing we're finding there, Beth mentioned this, there's a lot of interest, uh, out there. And if this interest really gets going and people want to, uh, develop to this vision and this plan. You could see that emerging, uh, market projection probably moving forward quite a bit quicker, so. It is important to have a brand, to understand what this is in the community, and I think. If you, uh, we'll go through some of our recommendations, but based on the framework and our strategies, we recommend. We really feel that we could get some, uh, see some good momentum along Lyndale Avenue. And then, uh, you know, this is actually my first plan we've been, and I think maybe Beth too, but first major plan. That we have been finishing up through the pandemic and we had, we've learned a lot through this process. You know, there's four key takeaways that, you know, trends that we are seeing, as I mentioned, those emerging trends in. Living preferences, preferences for, uh, a diversity of housing choice, uh, public spaces. These are all going to stay in place coming out of the pandemic. Retail is is going to be a little interesting. I'll talk about that in a second, but. One thing we're finding is that people are consistently, even if they're moving out of cities to suburbs. That they're looking for walkable places in the suburbs where they can walk to parks, walk to neighborhood amenities. So this is, uh, in in our assessment, it's really a trend that will only continue. And we think Lyndale Avenue is a perfect place to be able to, uh, put this in in into effect. Uh, and then affordability, uh, in in you're aware, well aware of this in Bloomington, uh, but affordable housing and has been. Particularly impacted during this, people looking for more affordable options, uh, based on, uh, jobs and whatnot, so that will continue. To be a big need in communities and particularly as well, uh, Bloomington. So for, uh, retail demand, uh, what we found is that there is, you know, you drive down Lyndale, there's a really, uh, big amount of. So, for retail demand, what we found is that there is, you know, you drive down Lyndale, there's a really big amount of retail. And what we see over the next, you know, decade or so is that it's really going to be based on retail success will be based on concentrating in nodes and creating a synergy of activity for people who are either driving to the corridor or walking or biking or what have you. So, you'll see through our recommendations that we're recommending concentrating some of that. But currently, Lyndale really has more retail than one would expect based on local buying power. So, the fact you're drawing people from further than just the local neighborhoods, that that does bode well for the retail environment along Lyndale. And then experiential retail, you know, retail where you can go and, you know, restaurants where there's a vibe and that has yet to be seen, how things will come back from that. But retail environments where people can go and have activity. And these, these places can be outside. They can have adjacent to public spaces, things like that. So, you don't always have to have an indoor retail component for successful experiential retail. So, what we did in our, in the strategy was broke it down by framework. And when we talk about framework, that is that physical construct, that's physical framework of streets or mobility. Mobility includes sidewalks and streets and buses and all the things people use to get around. And then, we also talk about public space here in a little bit. So, that's your parks, plazas, open spaces. And then finally, we get into a little more detail on the nodes and some of the strategies and framework recommendations we would have for the nodes. So, starting with the mobility framework, there's some key strategies that we are recommending. And you can see here, we discussed this last time and with the planning commission as well, is a multimodal path. You know, it would be great to give people an option to not only get around by walking or driving, but also have a network of paths where you could walk or take a bike. But primarily, we're talking about a multimodal path that traverses Lyndale Avenue from north to south. So, people can have that connectivity along that one cohesive corridor. In our framework, and that's on the next slide, you'll see a little more detail of the framework we're talking about. But we're looking at a number of priority street connections to further build out the grid of streets as redevelopment occurs along the corridor and particularly in the nodes. Building out those priority street connections will allow increased accessibility, connectivity between neighborhoods and the adjacent residential neighborhoods, as well as to the parks that Beth was talking about. The Aldridge Greenspine, and we'll go into this a little bit more when we talk about the 98th Street node. But that's this connection, this key connection from what we're calling a public square to the Bus Rapid Transit area. And it could be a great shopping street. And then finally, BRT station orientation. So, it's really, we found it to be really important with the new BRT line coming online with increased bus service projected along Lyndale Avenue and the east-west streets that these nodes in this Lyndale Avenue corridor be tightly tied to the BRT station, allowing people to get around with multiple options. Some of the feedback we heard, and this is both from council and planning commission over time, was that they strongly recommend using a temporary pilot multimodal, multimodal path. And pilot projects are things that can be done relatively cheap. Staff could certainly look into investing time in getting these things to happen, but it's testing out a lane for segments or it's using cones to see different behaviors and how they work out. You can do that at slip lanes, for example. There's a number of slip lanes or those pork chops along Lyndale Avenue where you could test out a pilot project to see, is this really needed? Can we give space back to pedestrians? So, that's one thing we heard. Any bike path should be on Lyndale. Early on, we were testing different routes to go north and south. One of them kind of weaved its way through some of the retail development on the east side of Lyndale. But what we heard is that the bike path should be along Lyndale. And then, there's demand from people who want to go north and south, north and south to the river. Again, where nature meets business, we think a connection to the river, a, maybe some wayfinding, but also looking at sidewalk widths and bike lanes, things like that are very important to the environmental aspects of the corridor. So, some of the key strategies, and this is where we'll have some, we'll introduce a couple of questions as we go here for these different elements. But I mentioned retrofitting the slip lanes. That's something that can be done relatively cheaply and quickly. And that can be done in the near term. Narrowing and eliminating curb cuts. You go up and down Lyndale, there's so many curb cuts that go in and out of these different businesses. As things redevelop, can these curb cuts start to be eliminated in some access management program put together that would make it a safer corridor to traverse if you're on bike or on a quote. Testing and installing a multimodal north-south path. I mentioned the path along, along Lyndale. And then finally, widening sidewalks. And again, we put opportunity as redevelopment occurs along the corridor that sidewalk should be looked at and maintained as, you know, in the middle of the winter. So, one of the first questions we had to have for the council is, should, should the city install temporary pilot multimodal path? Or introduce a pilot project for the slip lanes in the near term to start testing some of these concepts that we're recommending?
Council question posed to us. I guess I have a question specifically on the widened sidewalks and in tandem with a bicycle lane. Do you envision that type of multimodal lane replacing a sidewalk? Do you envision that in the street? What is your vision in terms of where a multimodal lane would be and what the definition exactly would be of it?
Yeah, typically a multimodal lane, you know, can be anywhere from eight to 12 to 16 feet wide. And depending on the size, they can accommodate different modes of transportation. What I, I think we're envisioning here is something that would accommodate people on foot as well as bicyclists. And there's a whole range there of different solutions. In the near term, maybe it's blocking out a section that's just for, you know, a bike one way. But I would say in the long term, multimodal path would occur in the right-of-way. And it would be either as part of a new street section where you have well-designed bike lanes, or it could be off onto the boulevard onto the side where it does replace a sidewalk. In widening sidewalks, aside from that multimodal path, that would be something I would recommend, you know, not, not put a sidewalk necessarily adjacent to that path. But when you have perpendicular streets that connect to Lyndale, those sidewalks should be widened. Or if there's any, you know, I would recommend going out and looking closely at where there may be deficiencies currently. And those things could be looked at to widen, to make it a more comfortable pedestrian path.
Mayor, if I could add to that, this also could include strategic locations for bumpouts at corners. You know, part of this strategy of reducing these slip lanes and, and, you know, the pork chops is because people basically have a free right when they turn onto Lyndale. And so, if there are opportunities to eliminate that, there might be opportunities in some cases where, and you know, this could be in coordination with future bus stops, is how we can expand a bumpout at intersections to reduce the crossing for pedestrians. So, there's a lot of ways to use temporary ballards to try ideas. We've been talking through a lot of these ideas with staff. A lot of the feedback at this point is that we want to be able to use it as a test to actually research how it's working. And conditions on the roads are not normal as they, as they would have been a year ago. So, trying to find the right time to also do that test to make sure that we're getting the right data as we go. But also, if you do a pilot, it also gets a lot of interest from the community on, you know, this plane is actually getting implemented. So, that's another reason and benefit to the, to the pilot projects.
And I'll just show real quickly, if I may, this, this image here on the second one down from the top is one example of how you could have a sidewalk. This is probably about eighteen, sixteen feet wide, where you can accommodate two bike lanes and a sidewalk adjacent to one another. Similarly, you could redesign a street section, you know. If the city wanted to put a, you know, put the vision and design into what does a new Lyndale Avenue look like, then you could really get into something that works well on street. But I would say if Lyndale Avenue doesn't change wholesale in one fell swoop, that a boulevard solution such as this would suffice. I think the key is to get people to move north and south along the corridor.
Well, thank you. With, with that answer and that explanation and the information, then yes, I, I would be in favor of a, a temporary or a test multimodal path or something, just, just to get a feel for exactly what it would be like. And for the, for the slip lanes, honestly, I haven't thought that much about them. I know that the, the free right does make it a little bit of a quicker motion for, for drivers. But I also know that it's a much more of a, of a hazard for bicyclists or pedestrians trying to cross that intersection. So, that's my two cents on the questions that you're asking. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I also am supportive of these recommendations. And I was curious, since Lyndale is a county road, and I know the county has been involved, are they supportive of these strategies or recommending specific strategies along with you?
If I could just jump in just one second. South of 494, Councilmember Carter, Lyndale Avenue is a city street, actually. It's not a county road.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Well, then, never mind. But yes.
But the county is supportive.
Good, good.
Councilmember Coulter.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't ready. I thought you were going to call in someone else first. So, one, first of all, just generally as a comment, it's been a few years since I lived over in that neck of the woods. But as far as sidewalks, I would add that an additional concern, having, you know, lived there and walked over there is frankly, a standardization of the size of sidewalks. There is, for, for a relatively developed part of town, there's a surprisingly wide variation in sidewalk size. So, I think that's something to look at as well. My question as far as the slip lanes, because I know, I mean, I know that this question is going to be asked. When, in your experience, when slip lanes have been eliminated, I mean, folks obviously are still able to turn right on red at the appropriate time. Has there been any change in traffic patterns? Or has there been any, specifically, has there been any sort of slowdowns or, you know, anything related to that since folks are now, you know, having to stop and look for traffic more at the intersection?
It, it does, Councilmember, it does slow down traffic. And part of that is because someone actually needs to slow down and deliberately look right or left when they're turning, which means that they're looking at where a pedestrian or bicyclist is on the, on the corner. And so, that is the, the biggest benefit is that it makes the driver be more deliberate with their actions when they get to the corner. And that feels a little bit less like, it, it's the type of retrofit strategy that is perfect for a suburban environment. Because what you're doing is starting to create a lot more of a place where people are slowing down and where there's a lot more kind of intermingling of the modes rather than a priority mode.
Yep. And I would just say overall, the traffic impacts, I would say, are negligible. The, the positive is that slowing traffic down creates a more, a safer and more pedestrian-friendly. So, you know, that, that small activity right there, while it might slow a driver down a little bit, they become accustomed to that over time. But you get a big win in that you're giving safety and more safe harbor to the pedestrian who's wanting to cross the street. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Councilmember. The, the one caveat I want to mention, and this is why it needs to be done in very deliberate areas with some study, is that there are some places where trucks need to make right turns to get to some of the industrial on the east side. And you want to make sure that when they can turn, they have enough turning space so they don't hit the median in the middle of the road. But other than that, I would say that most other conditions are going to allow that. And so, this is something that we've talked about with Public Works, to be able to do in strategic locations. It's not going to work everywhere, but it will work in some good locations.
And that was actually my, my very next question. So, thank you for anticipating that. I guess the only other question I had as far as, or maybe not even so much a question, as a comment, you know, widening sidewalks and putting in bike pads and so on. I mean, that, that is going to have an impact on the property owners, on the businesses on that stretch. And I'm wondering specifically if there, if there has been any comment from, you know, the, the business owners on that stretch as far as what they, what they think about that, positive or negative?
This is, this is anecdotal, but I will say through the process, the, the business owners were very supportive of creating a more walkable environment. I think what it would do is give them, it, it would give them increased access to their businesses. People are more prone to walk or bike and go places. So, I've only seen it as a positive through this process. I haven't heard anything negative from the business owners personally.
Thank you. And that, that would back up my own sort of guess on that. But I think obviously, we just want to be, you know, very mindful of that and making sure we're seeking out the full range of opinions on that. So, and to answer your question, yes, I, I, I think it's, it's worth a pilot project. I think it's, it's something worth looking at. Obviously, you know, you, you, I think, Beth, you mentioned the, the when to do this is, is going to be very important, not only obviously with a pandemic. But, you know, I, I think if we did it tomorrow, it probably wouldn't get as much use within sub-zero weather. So, you know, obviously, being very mindful about that kind of thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Yeah, generally speaking, I'm, I'm excited about opportunities to kind of connect our neighborhood centers multimodally regardless. So, a test would be pretty interesting. But I'm just kind of trying to figure out, you had mentioned that the test is helpful to kind of measure modifications of behavior. Is that on the driver's side? Is there getting used to these? Is that on folks using the multimodal options? Because I'm also just kind of wondering if it's the latter, if we don't necessarily have those activated ground floor spaces yet, if those green, kind of publicly accessible spaces aren't there yet. Are we going to see increased usage on the walking and biking side since the destinations are still off in the future?
Councilmember Martin, I'll start and maybe Jason will add to this. So, it's to test both the, the driver's reactions to the test as well as the other modes. We did hear from community members who live nearby that they just don't feel very safe walking to Lyndale Avenue to go to the bar or go to a restaurant or go shopping. We heard the same thing from representatives of Thermoking that their, their employees just don't walk, even though they're just a block from the corridor. So, I think we'd see some of those kind of instant reactions because people did say, you know, while you look at the corridor holistically, you might not think that there are a lot of places to walk or bike. There are those hidden gems throughout that I think people would be interested in using. And so, I think this is really going to be a benefit for the people, you know, you know, within four blocks of the corridor to really figure out a way to be able to do these pilots.
And psychologically, it's for both the drivers and the pedestrians. It's a learning curve. You know, this, the corridor's been auto-oriented for decades. So, it's, you know, I, I would, I would say that some education or announcements should be associated with this for sure, to let people know. But, you know, again, that's another opportunity for you to say, we're doing something along Lyndale Avenue.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. One more quick question and then we'll move on. Just looking at your map that you have up here and looking at this, the dotted blue line from about American Boulevard, and it looks like it goes south down to Nativity of Mary or so. You had talked, Beth, about connecting to the river and wondering why this doesn't go all the way down to the river with this proposal?
In the plan, we make, we have an arrow. So, you know, this, this boundaries were really what we looked at for the primary framework and strategies. So, within the, in the strategy plan itself, there is mention of connecting to the river. But the only thing that would happen between this study area and the river would be that one line. So, certainly a line could be, you know, we could zoom out and show a line that would connect the river versus making a verbal nod to it.
And Mayor and Council, I think what we're looking at for opportunities along Lyndale are that what we're going to, what we're presenting to you are almost case studies or opportunities that you could use in one location and would be applicable in a lot of other locations. So, we think that a lot of these recommendations, while our study area generally ends kind of ninety-ninth, ninety-nine-ish, you could use these same recommendations throughout the entire corridor down to the river because they're just as applicable in those cases.
Thank you. I'd agree with you to a point because once you get south of 98th, it becomes very residential and the, the nature changes quite a bit. So, you might want to think about that. So, council, no other questions? If not, onward.
Great. All right, the next was the public space framework. And really, our major framework recommendations out of this are the public square, which we'll talk about a little more in 98th Street. Have any multi-layered public space. So, we, as, as a framework, we look at this as all the components of public space where people can use the space. So, multi, by multi-layered, we mean having pocket parks and plazas and the public square and Aldridge Greenspine. square and Aldrich Green Spine, all of which offer different activities for people, uh, using them. But even within a larger public space such as the, the square, we would recommend having a multi-layered public space that would accommodate a range of activities from public, you know, programmed events to leisure on the lawn, uh, to, you know, be able to visit a retailer adjacent to it. Uh, tree lines are really important, uh, through this plan. Again, the nature meets business, the tie to the river, uh, and the adjacent parks to the east and west. Uh, and so one of the things we'll want to talk about is, is a double row of trees. We'll get into that in a little bit. And then finally, the public space framework is really important to connect to those other neighborhood parks and making key, uh, connections or wayfinding, uh, putting wayfinding out there to get people to those parks. Uh, some of the previous feedback we heard is that our approach, uh, that which we've kept moving on, uh, to public space made sense. They need, when they are built, they need to be high quality and designed for families. I, I think that ties into that multi-layered public space, uh, a variety of spaces that go hand in hand with mobility improvements. So maybe some of the, uh, future bus stops or, uh, modes of transportation, you know, maybe it's the, uh, multimodal path that tie into these and create, uh, a woven together framework between the mobility and the, uh, public space. And then finally, uh, design places that delight people. I thought that was a great comment.
I think that was from the mayor, actually, from the last time we were here. Places that delight.
So it was a great comment. But, uh, you know, I'll, I'll say another thing. We heard this and we didn't get it in this presentation that I'm thinking about it is, uh, the multicultural uh, nature of this corridor, those public spaces should take on the identity of those who are along this corridor and using it. They should shape, the people that are here, uh, in the neighborhoods should shape what that public space looks like. So I would say on top of all of this, as you move forward with any public space enhancements that you're involving the community, which you do, uh, but trying to get a great cross section of those who are living in the community to help create the identity of what that public space framework is. Uh, and then for the strategies, uh, duller row of trees, uh, let me talk about this for a second. So if you look out to the map to the right, one of our recommendations, we've done this other places and it's been quite successful. We realize there's a lot of maintenance behind trees, but having trees that are mature are invaluable to a corridor that has typically seen asphalt and concrete. Uh, so really starting to change the nature of the whole, uh, the whole public space strategy and tying those, those larger public spaces like the parks and the plazas together with tree lines. So we recommend having a nice tree long, along line along the entire length of Lyndale, but within the nodes, the ninety-eight, ninety-eighth street node down here, eighty-sixth street node up here, and then also along the Aldrich Green Spine, which is down here, we'll talk about it a bit. A double row of trees will really, uh, and they can fit, uh, it within a lot of the rights of way that we looked at, but a, a double row of trees has more than, you know, four times the impact of a single row. Uh, it brings environmental benefits. It also brings shade and comfort for pedestrians who are walking along this corridor. And it also also offers safety in many situations. So this is a strong recommendation that we've made, uh, using Winter City Design Guidelines. And the, uh, these design guidelines can play out more in future, uh, regulations or strategies. But using, what's, uh, sorry, Winter City Guidelines, uh, pertains to how you cite buildings in relation to public spaces. You know, are you shielding people from winds, for example? Are you designing places that people can come in and out of? There's a whole range of opportunities, uh, when designing as a winter city. And then finally, uh, the public square and Green Spine. And I will say that all three of these are opportunities as redevelopment occurs. Um, some of these, the, the public square is a large investment, which is on, currently on private property, but having a strategy in place so that when things do redevelop or when the city does commit to some type of funding to help grow the public space framework, um, that, that opportunity is there for you to seize. So we have a couple of questions and we, again, we can go into any of these, these mobility and public space strategies weave themselves into, um, the nodes that we'll talk about. So it is kind of a holistic discussion, but, you know, and if you want to push this, these questions off till we talk a little more about them, that's fine. But, you know, the two questions, should the city develop the Green Spine and the park? And then should a double row of trees be used in select areas, uh, within the study area? So I'll just leave those questions with you, Mayor.
Council? I mean, you're taking, taking apart the, the practicalities of it and the cost implications and the, the space in the, in, in the right of way and so on. Uh, I can't imagine anyone saying, no, fewer trees are better than more trees. It's, uh, I, I think trees are, uh, as you said, they're, they're, they obviously add, they, they add a warmth, they add safety, they add shelter, they, they add so much to a, to an area that, uh, I, I think it, it would be a no-brainer. But again, the question becoming cost, practicality, space and, and all the, all the things that come along with it. Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Matt. Um, with regard to this question, I'm just answering or, uh, wondering if this was, um, uh, considered as part of the Parks Master Planning Process or, and/or by the Park and Rec Commission, um, so that fair feedback was incorporated and how that, if, if it was so, how, how was that done?
So interesting timing. So staff, did you have any comments on your end as far as the Parks and Rec Commission?
Sure, I can try to jump in there just for a second. Um, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Nelson, um, Renee Clark, who is in charge of, uh, she's the project manager on the Parks Master Plan Update, uh, was, uh, involved in this project pretty closely. Um, we certainly vetted through a lot of these plans with a, a fairly large staff team, including Renee. One of the things that Renee mentioned is that in some of the analysis done with the Parks Master Plan Study, um, where they were doing gap analysis, and as it turns out, this area in Lower Lyndale was one of the areas where there was a gap in, in park, um, access. So, um, while, um, you know, these were going on at the same time. So this idea was kind of being developed at the same time that they were looking at the Parks Plan. It, it meshes pretty well with, with the Park Plan. So Barb, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
I don't. Thanks, Julie.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, it does. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to see the coordination between the two different things that we're working on. So it's, uh, it's nice to see it wasn't too silent.
Absolutely. Council, any additional input on these two questions? We can come back to them, I guess, in, in the context of a broader discussion if we want to and if, as we get going here. Why don't we plan on doing that? Let's press ahead and I think, um, it will likely come up, as I said, is, as we talk about things, as we move along with the, with the, uh, discussion.
Mayor, if I could, sorry.
Councilmember Coulter.
All right. Just one quick comment, just while I'm thinking about it now. I, I think it's, um, just really, really important that these, the public space strategy and the mobility strategy kind of go hand in hand. Because I think, you know, one of the things about that area is, is, um, the, the way it's designed in terms of mobility influences a, a lot of the way the, the public spaces act, right? Because it's so car-heavy of a corridor, that's part of the reason that folks aren't, aren't gathering in public spaces, aren't hanging out a lot outside in that area. So, um, I just want to sort of press home the point that, that, um, those two things are very much related.
All right, onward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for that feedback. Um, so what we want to talk about next are the key nodes. And, uh, we presented you, uh, with these nodes last time and I'll go through a little bit of the feedback we received. Uh, this is, um, a pivotal recommendation of this, um, uh, retrofit strategy, as we talked about at the beginning of this, uh, presentation, to, to concentrate your density and your, um, and your businesses to create that critical mass of people that can therefore support more business, um, and that pedestrian, um, orientation that we're really looking for here. So the key nodes framework, so this is the physical design, uh, really focused on an opportunity to concentrate new housing and activity in these two nodes. Uh, so that's concentration, the housing and the retail uses. Uh, for those of you who had heard David Dixon throughout this process, he'll say a thousand units of housing can bring one block of Main Street to life. Uh, that really does, uh, play out where you have more people living, there is more of a demand for them to be able to have that experiential retail, get things, uh, close by. Um, a walkable pedestrian-friendly multimodal, uh, node in each of these locations. Obviously, we want to make sure that the policy and the regulations support the direction that we're heading in. And, uh, we want to outline strategic public investments. Uh, we can't do everything, uh, right at the beginning. So let's identify the priorities, um, as we've been doing, uh, going along. So feedback we received from you and the planning commission during the summer, the locations of the nodes are well-balanced in relation to each other. Uh, eighty-sixth makes sense particularly due to the existing, uh, bike route, um, on eighty-sixth. Uh, and ninety-eighth is, you know, an obvious, uh, priority, uh, due to the BRT station and existing planning that you as a city have done here. So next, uh, when the next slide, there we go. Okay. So, um, our keynote strategy is really built around four priorities. Um, prioritizing catalytic development that maximizes density and activity. When I say that, I just mean let's not underdevelop sites in these nodes. Let's, uh, because the first development that we see in each of these nodes is going to be a catalyst. It's going to tell that mark, the market that there's a, there's a, there's a place here that you want to invest in. And also another side of that is, you know, seeing the city, uh, even do pilot projects is, uh, assigned to the market that the city is themselves investing in changes along Lyndale. So we really want to prioritize, uh, that density and that activity when we can. Um, proactively rezoning is part of our strategy, uh, not just kind of waiting for the development to happen and then, and then kind of working with a developer to rezone. Part of the idea, again, of rezoning is to show the development community that, uh, that there's a place here that the city cares about and that they want to get redeveloped. Um, we want to assume each development will require some level of public-private partnership. A lot of this is already occurring in the city between our, your staff and developers. Um, but every one of these sites is tricky. It's, it's a redevelopment or it's a, uh, it's a reuse. And so there really needs to be a lot of coordination between staff and private developers, uh, existing property owners, businesses on sites, to make sure that you're really getting the, the, the benefit, uh, for everyone in that deal. And to continue to negotiate for reduced parking, uh, your staff does this already, particularly through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, where that comes into play. Uh, your, uh, required parking is still very high, um, but your staff have a, a variety of opportunities to reduce that with a developer. And so that is a, a, a key strategy is to continue to, uh, use that method. So I'll start with eighty-sixth street. Uh, this is, um, a, a concept that you saw and we've made adjustments, uh, since the last time we saw you during the summer. Uh, some priorities at eighty-sixth, uh, are to expand the mix of uses. Uh, we don't have a lot of retail, uh, residential here and it's primarily because residential isn't allowed by the zoning. And so we just want to, there's an eclectic mix, though. You have industrial, uh, you have, uh, retail that looks like industrial, you have industrial that kind of looks like retail, and then you have retail. Uh, and so we want to, um, uh, just allow more uses and allow more flexibility for uses to let the market do what the market's going to do. Uh, there, we also want to prioritize, um, uh, industrial property al- uh, alternatives. Um, a lot of the, uh, industrial, all the industrial properties along the east side of Lyndale are tra- are identified as transitional industrial. It's the, uh, properties east of them, uh, like Garfield and East that are, are, are really there to stay. And in any industrial area, anywhere you find it, uh, there are growing pains, uh, with transitions, but there's a lot of proven best method, uh, best practice methods to transition industrial into other uses. And we see examples all over the place of awesome breweries or restaurants or, or gyms that went into, uh, vacant industrial buildings. And that is a really cool sign of success when you see some of these, uh, entre- more entrepreneurial businesses moving into a neighborhood. So we want to allow that. Land use transitions, making sure that we are really respecting the, uh, single-family nature, particularly on the west side, uh, of Aldrich, making sure that there are, we're very sensitive to that transition of new development to, uh, the existing context of the neighborhood. And we talked to, um, last time about, uh, a stormwater facility in public space that we could do around the, the bus facility, to really take advantage of that site and, uh, the stormwater benefits that we can garner there. So the feedback we received from you and the planning commission during the summer, uh, that we need to be mindful of the large buildings next to residential. And that, again, goes to those land use transitions. And you liked the idea of incorporating natural elements into the design. So I'll talk a little bit next about the strategy here. So, um, as I mentioned, uh, we have a bit of a, you know, the, the zoning really doesn't match this plan, uh, mainly because almost all the zoning here doesn't allow residential. Of particular interest is the, uh, B2 zoning on the west side of Lyndale. We recommend rezoning that to B4 to really open up the opportunities for more mixed-use development, um, and let the market dictate what that might look like, uh, in relation to this plan. Uh, we want to evaluate the creation of an overlay district. This kind of gets to the issues of transitioning the industrial on the east side. Um, you have some industrial businesses, industrial buildings that look like retail storefronts, retail shopping, uh, but, uh, they don't allow retail. And so in some cases, you have spaces that are sitting vacant, uh, and, uh, need some, uh, more flexibility to, um, transition and become more, um, financially feasible. So we're recommending the city study, uh, an overlay district that can kind of get to that transition of uses, but that can also hit some of the, um, site design elements that will make it more, uh, urban-centric, uh, versus the existing conditions. And one thing that is a really interesting element here is that you could, uh, we want to conduct a brownfield assessment. We think this is, uh, an opportunity, but we think it's a near-term opportunity. The EPA, uh, has an annual brownfield grant assessment program that, uh, uh, you can, um, do assessments of sites or you could do, and you can do additional planning. You could look at that, uh, and evaluate that overlay district. And what we find a lot of times is that what is keeping the market from, um, potentially looking at industrial sites is more of a perception of, uh, a, a brownfield or perception of pollution, uh, versus real. Now, there's probably real pollution here. This isn't a, this is a commercial corridor, but a brownfield grant could really, um, help, uh, give some science to the market that you're interested in redevelopment here. So our questions, uh, where are the most important places in the node to sensitively transition those land uses or the size of buildings? And how proactive should the city be in implementation? For example, uh, are, are you supportive of proactively rezoning and seeking funding like that, the, uh, brownfield assessments?
Council, thoughts or input on those questions? I guess one thing that I would suggest, I don't know how attuned you have been to our recent discussions, but this notion of transitional uses was, um, has, has been top of mind for this council over the past two months or so. As we've looked at that specifically, uh, the, the transitional uses of, of light industrial to, um, to residential and everything kind of in between. And it might be worth a discussion, if you haven't had it already with our planning staff, to at least better understand exactly what we're talking about and the things that we went through, uh, and we, we discussed as a council. And in, in particular, in terms of noise, but I think more in particular, even more particular would be compatible uses, uh, trying to make sure that we're, we're, we're not setting ourselves up for, uh, issues or, or ultimately failure if we, if we have these dramatically incompatible uses in, in our transition zones.
Thank you, Mayor. Your staff have made us aware of your current discussions. Um, and, uh, we're very sensitive to, uh, those challenges. Um, there are places in the Twin Cities where this has been done well, but, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be full-fledged residential here. As we talked about, it could be, uh, more active uses in those old industrial buildings.
Council, anything else on this? Additional thoughts here? And I guess I agree with you with the, uh, the concept of the, the brownfield assessments. I do think it's an opportunity, but I do- I do think it's an opportunity, but I do think it's a bit of a challenge also because you're exactly right. It's a, it's, it's an industrial area and I'm sure we're going to find some brown, brownfields that are going to take some cleanup of some kind. And I suppose the devil you know is better than the devil you don't know. So we might as well figure it out and get it out of the way. But it's, it could be, it, it could, could present challenges to folks who might be considering this. If not actual challenges, just challenges from, of perception of whether or not they want to dig into it. Councilmember Nelson, a question?
Oh yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna answer the question, but in general, I think looking at utilizing existing industrial commercial areas in order to facilitate more of a mixed use with some residential, I think makes sense overall. I also think the evaluation of the overlay district and/or transitional districts that take some of those industrial properties and allow for a little bit more retail in them makes sense. I know there's interest in other areas, industrial areas within the city. I think in the notes for tonight's meeting, it had mentioned that may be a broader conversation. Not with regards to this note, and I'd be interested in having that broader conversation as well to see where, where that might not make sense. And Mayor, thank you for bringing up the recent discussions on, you know, impacts to the residential. I know to the west, there is some residential here and I think we need to be sensitive to that and ultimately find a way to make whatever we allow there that will, you know, not have some of the, that we recently ran into. So the brownfield, I, I don't have a strong opinion on, so.
Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I guess generally speaking, I'm, I'd be excited to move forward pretty aggressively on this, both with proactive rezoning, kind of whatever we need to move forward, especially as we're bringing on new community development staff. Question I got though, so earlier in the document, you mentioned a whole lot of factors for figuring out what properties to be moving on first. Owner motivation, catalytic value of those projects. And in either case, it would need some public-private partnership. I guess how, how do you weigh those two things? Say you, you have a property owner that's extremely motivated, but there is a property that'd be way more catalytic. I'm thinking the northwest side of the intersection area you pointed out earlier. Do you keep your powder dry for, for something you think might have, might get more dominoes moving? Or where, have you seen this be successful between those two?
Okay, I'll answer, I'll start. So I would look at this, a couple of different ways you could look at it. I, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't discourage someone from developing, even if it's not the best catalytic site. I wouldn't discourage them from developing as long as it's within the framework, you know, and it doesn't detract from that. But I think that's, you know, that's a conversation the council's really gonna have to, I wouldn't say come to terms with, but as, as the development occurs or redevelopment occurs along the corridor, what are the projects? And we, we have a question a little later, but what are those projects that should receive funding? Maybe there are certain ones that, that shouldn't, that don't get to that catalytic value. So I, I, there's gonna have to, I think the council may have to have a threshold, but it's certainly to get some of these things moving, there will have to be a catalyst for a catalytic development. So, you know, whether it be council funding for, you know, improvements and what have you. I don't know if I'm answering your question right, but.
Councilmember, I would say too that any opportunity could be a great opportunity. You know, while we as planners think that we can, you know, anticipate the future as much as possible, this is a policy document. And so what you want to be prepared to is latch onto something that we might not have thought about. And we're hoping that the plan gives enough guidance and direction for what that, that fateful opportunity might be and that you can really use that as a catalyst when we may not have anticipated it.
That's good context, thank you.
Good, sorry, my kindergartner started in the school today and was running around. So that's why I went off the mic for a little bit, sorry.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would, you know, to the specific questions you asked, just, I would just sort of echo, you know, Councilmember Nelson's comments about transition specifically focusing on the resident, residential areas, particularly I think in the north and the, the west side there. It's a pretty, for a, a commercial corridor, it's a pretty abrupt transition to that sort of single-family residential in, in that neck of the woods. So I think we do, we do need to be very sensitive about that. As far as how proactively, you know, should we be in implementation? I guess I would say I'll tell you when I think you're being too proactive. I think, you know, I mean, I, I, this is something I spoke to, watched these meetings before, know that I've, I've hit this note for a while, that I, I think, you know, we have a lot of potential to sort of craft the, the kind of experience, the kind of city that we want. And, and I, I, my concern would be that if we just sort of sit back and let it happen, that we end up getting a bit far afield from what we're hearing directly from the community as far as what they want. So I, you know, I think it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's full steam ahead.
Thank you.
Any additional thoughts, counsel? If not, let's move forward. And counsel, if I'm missing you, speak up. I can't see everybody on the screen at the, the same time, all the time. So if I miss you, please do speak up, so. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. So please, again, interrupt if you have additional thoughts, but we will have a very key question at the end of this node. And this is the last strategy that we will be going through before we talk about some funding. So the Ninety-Eighth Street node is a critical place for us to get this right. And a lot of things need to come together. Ground floor activation, the new public square that Jason talked about. You see that identified is pretty much in the middle of your screen with a number two on top of it. The Aldrich Spine is just to the west of it, leading from Ninety-Eighth Street up to the, to the new public square. The orientation of the BRT station, we know this takes a lot of coordination with Metro Transit and other entities to, and we know that's all happening, but just, it is so critical that people can safely walk to the station. And of course, neighborhood services, you have Fairview here, you have Walgreens, you have a variety of other services here. You have the Works Museum, making sure that, this, this node is such an interesting balance of local destinations and citywide destinations and even regional destinations that it could really be the fit, the game changer for how people view Lyndale Avenue. And of course, with the new BRT station coming, you will have more people seeing Lyndale and seeing this node. So some of the feedback we received from you and the planning commission during the summer. There's support for this overall concept and, you know, making sure that we have that, those multimodal connections and paths and we prioritize pedestrian safety, that those are key here. So it's not just about building it up with development. It's about making sure that there's the connections in between that development to the places that people need to go and that we really focus on the public realm in coordination with that, that private development. And here's a bird's eye view looking southwest with Ninety-Eighth and Lyndale in the middle. You can see the, the new square, the green square closer to us. And the double row of trees on Aldrich going down to Lyndale, down to Ninety-Eighth. And just, this is what it could be like. This is not what it's gonna pan out to be in the future. This is a vision for what it could be like. This is how buildings should, should front building, should front streets, should front public plazas. It gives you a sense of density versus where, you know, we can still fill park, public parking lots in the middle. Just a lot of opportunities here. So the top strategies here are again to rezone from B-two to B-four to allow for residential. There was quite a bit of rezoning that occurred a couple of, a few years ago with the adoption of the Ninety-Eighth Street Station area plan. We're recommending that you fill in the places that weren't rezoned at that time. Those public realm improvements should happen near term, particularly adjacent and near that BRT station to make sure that people can really get there effectively. The Aldrich Green Spine we talked about, again, a double row of trees connected to the public plaza. But really, this was a, a topic that was being negotiated with the owner of the Clover Center for a while during this process and before that. And so it's not a new concept, but what we are proposing is that it is an expanded version of that and the public square is an opportunity when development presents itself. Jason, is there anything you want to add to the framework and the strategies?
No, I just, I do want to reiterate one thing you said on the last slide. And I think it's so important that, you know, to maintain the identity here, that there are those amenities. You know, it's the Works Museum, it's, it's making sure that the Festival of Foods can still, doesn't have to cease to be, that there's still parking accommodated throughout this plan. I think it takes kind of the best parts of Lyndale Avenue and makes them even better in, in building into this framework and strategy. So particularly at this node, you really have a great opportunity to kind of seize what we see as, are the emerging trends and really create a great identity and special place along Lyndale.
Yes, and you don't want to underdo it here. When you have opportunities for redevelopment, you want to maximize the opportunities with that redevelopment. So here's our key question. Should development that does not meet the recommendations of this plan be funded by the city? The tough question.
Counsel, not a trick question. This is a yes or no. I will weigh in that my, my answer would be no. Development not meeting this plan should not be funded by the city. I think as we are working toward this plan, I think we should do all that we can to influence possible development on the key parcels here. And I mean, if, if this is the plan that we want to move forward with, and granted, this is a draft plan, but if this ends up being the final plan, this is what we want to move forward with, then I think it would make no sense for the city to be funding development that doesn't meet the recommendations of the plan. Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Nelson I'd weigh in.
Oh, Councilmember Nelson again. I'm sorry you're not on my screen, I apologize. Councilmember Nelson?
No worries at all. I guess in terms of the question that was just asked, in general, probably not, but I would not put it out of the realm of possibility that private people are creative and could come up with something even better than what we put back. And I certainly wouldn't want to forbid or, you know, signal that we wouldn't be interested in looking at someone's great idea if there was benefit to it, that it might be deserving of funding. And I do have a question in terms of some of this with like, particularly that Aldrich Avenue Greenway, which is someone's private property. You know, what exactly is the mechanism to get that greenway in there? And, you know, how, I mean, their property, you know, what, how do we, what tools do we have to encourage them to do that, to connect Aldrich all the way through?
Right. I'll give a quick answer to that, if I may. So any of these, most of these improvements would happen with redevelopment as redevelopment occurs. What this really does, if the, if the council adopts this as policy direction, it really gives staff the ability as development proposals are being negotiated and as those development proposals then come forward to the planning commissioner council, it really gives you all the ability to have those negotiations and, and deny or refuse to fund things that may not be in the spirit of the plan. So short answer is this would happen as redevelopment occurs, typically in a public-private partnership. For example, say the square is being redeveloped on freeway four. If that goes away and the site is redeveloped in the future, you may bring partners in to kind of work through all that entire process and land dedications, funding of parks, whatnot.
Mayor, councilmember, let me, let me add on to that. As I mentioned, you know, this, it, it has been a reality in, you know, in previous discussions with staff and that property owner that they would like to see a connection through that block. We are more formalizing it in this process, but there were a lot of discussions about, would that be to the conditions of a, of a public road? Would it be a private road? Who would be able to use it if it was a private road? How would pedestrians travel up and down it? So this is not, this has not been a theoretical discussion and it has been a real discussion with that property owner and your staff was doing it at that time. So now it just gives them more backing to really push developers to do this when they need city funding to do their projects.
Thank you. And just one quick follow-up and maybe it dovetails with what you just said in terms of city funding, but would we be at risk of a takings claim by forcing that type of amenity on their property?
Councilmember, there would only be an issue of taking if you didn't compensate them and compensating them means helping to fund their project. So this is a pretty common practice in redevelopment in other parts of the region in order to, and particularly at station areas that have been, that are being put in, stations being put in already developed areas. When sites get redeveloped, a lot of times cities will work with that developer to not just get the private development, the buildings, but the public benefits as well. And the hitch, the rational nexus is funding or some sort of approval that you can tie that the, the developer needs for their project.
You know, I had to say that best case scenario is it's a collaborative process. You know, that there doesn't have to be a, any acquisition of property outside of, you know, a straight-up negotiation with a property owner. But one thing that will be very apparent to property owners as this plan is, is moving forward is the value proposition and the economics behind what their property is now worth with this plan moving forward versus not. So oftentimes that will bring people to the table to have fair negotiations and the collaboration with local government.
I'm sorry, let me add one more thing. For these large sites, developers want to break them up so they can basically have more buildings, more development on the site. And so a lot of times they need their own access points to get to parking, underground garages. And when you add something like the Aldrich Green Spine, you also add more frontage, which developers really love because then they can put more retail or doors to an apartment building on, you know, essentially what looks like a new road. So developers do like to do site designs like this as well. It's not just for the benefit of, of the public, it's for the benefit of the development too.
Thank you.
Counsel, additional input? Thoughts, questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I think this is an interesting question. You know, the development not meeting the, the recommendations of the plan be funded by the city. So when I think about this development area, you know, basically it stretches from 494 down to, down to the river. I try to compare this with other developments that we already have. So for example, if we look at Penn and Americans, South, South Loop, or we look at the Normandale area, I look to try to, try to make some comparison in terms of what we're attempting to try to do with this area and how it differs from those development district areas. And so just kind of thinking about that, you know, I guess my response, you know, to this question has to do with how I see this particular area being different from, from those areas and what we were trying to do there. You know, are, are we in this area trying to follow along with, in terms of our values that we talked about in our strategic priorities in terms of equity and sustainability? And, and how those things fit into this? And so, I mean, that's sort of how I come at, at this particular development, how we should prioritize how city funding should be utilized. And so I guess that would be the question that I would turn around and ask the developers. If we look at those, or even staff maybe has a better understanding, we look at this particular corridor that we're looking at, how, how does this differ from those other development areas? What, what are the, what's the? What, what are the, what's the advantages of going down this pathway as opposed to either one, keeping it the way it is? Or those other development areas that we see in the city?
I can think of it, I'll start out. So one thing that's key here, I think, versus, well, not so much South Loop, but Penn and, Penn and American, is you have a broader framework that in order to, you get to the Aldrich Green Spine to work or the square to work or some of these other plazas or public spaces, for example. That if you don't follow this, that framework, it can kind of fall apart in areas. Not that it can't be different than what we're showing, but one, one big difference at Penn and American versus what I see here, I think Penn and American was a great development to show how density and critical mass can really start to support walkable neighborhood services, a variety of uses. I think it's, you know, it's, it's a great pilot to look at from years ago. One thing I would change dramatically from Penn and American is have the retail, the frontage of the buildings facing the streets and enlivening the streets. So that is one, that's one distinction I would see with Penn American and what we're looking at here is, is how do you address the public realm? So I think there's some fine details that I would make sure I would hold to in order to invigorate the public realm and the sidewalks and the streets and the retail environment. I don't know if this starts to answer the question, but I think overall, the council, you know, as these developments come forward, I think it's probably incumbent on the council to understand where that line is. I, Councilmember Lohman, I absolutely understand, you know, if maybe there's certain things that advance the plan that we hadn't even thought about. So those things, you know, those are things we can't all, you know, guess what all those are going to be during the process. But yeah, you're going to be faced with some, probably some difficult questions. And I guess, you know, it's, it's up to the appetite of the council to really define what that might be.
And I guess, you know, what I would say is, sorry about that. But what I would say is that's really the question that I'm trying to, trying to answer as you go through this presentation. You know, generally I'm, I guess on all, most of these questions, I don't have a, you know, a solid no or, you know, a solid yes. But because the question I'm trying to answer in my mind with, you know, why should I want this? From the residents' perspective or from the business owner's perspective, or those folks who come in from outside of the community of Bloomington? Why do I want this as opposed to something else? Either what, what we have now or what we've already kind of developed? And that's the question I'm really trying to answer. What makes this distinctive and different? And so, you know, certainly we're answering that as we go along here. We've kind of seen these before, but that's kind of the question I'm trying to, trying to drill down to. And I think that, that's for me the standard that I would use in terms of how we would utilize tax dollars that are scarce, our resources. And whether or not we want to fund in this particular area or really any area in the city. So I mean, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah. Councilmember, the way I would, I would answer that in two ways. One, that it was very clear when we proposed from your RFP that this was not meant to be a new regional destination, this corridor. It was meant to be revitalized for the community surrounding it. And the community surrounding it needed a revitalized corridor that could benefit them. And so I, I think of that sometimes when I think about the uniqueness of Lyndale. This is the original Main Street. We heard that time and time again. This is not the Mall of America. It's not, you know, new development at the South Loop. This is the, the heart of the community, the history of the community. And so I think that's what makes it unique. And I'm going to say something else that sounds like it might contradict, but it's actually complimentary. This is going to be a transit-oriented development area. This, so you should think about this a little bit like the South Loop in how can we design an area that supports the transit infrastructure that's coming in? It's a very big deal that there's going to be a BRT station here. It could, I know Metro Transit is going to present after us. It could really be a catalyst for this area, but it could also just be a catalyst for better access to transit and better access to other parts of the region. If the BRT station comes here, there'll likely be a new bus, local bus going all the way up and down Lyndale. That's a very big deal. That again goes to this idea of the original Main Street. And so I think that's why this is a priority area, but it also makes it very authentically Bloomington in a way that maybe some of those other areas, maybe don't have as much of that feel.
I'm just going to jump in here for a second. I wanted to put things in context, so it's not really an either or. You know, we, over the last 15 years, focused on the three development districts and we prepared development district plans for all of those. And then four years ago, the council started saying, you know, look at, we've got all these old commercial areas in town and they're really looking pretty ragged. And we really need to start focusing on the interior of the city. And then there was like some synergies that are happening here as Beth just noted, the whole, the BRT decision to move forward with the orange line and that there is an opportunity right here. And this is, then there's that historical piece where this is, was the historical heart of this city. So I, I think in terms of, you know, why are we, are we looking at Lyndale? I think that, that is part of the reason why. But in terms of making your decisions on funding, some of those broader criteria, the council strategies about sustainability and equity, those really apply citywide and not just in this quarter, of course. Some of the priorities for this corridor, I think, are being laid out in this plan. And I would say the first one is that, you know, if the city is presented with the question of spending money, and not to be super rigid about it, because if there's a great proposal, there's a great proposal. But I think this plan is saying you should prioritize these two nodes. And you should prioritize making the area more, more walkable, more multimodal. And you should prioritize making connections between, to the neighborhoods and to the other green spaces. You should prioritize changing the physical character by planting trees and, and, and having a better sidewalk system, et cetera. So that's what this plan is, is trying to provide are a set of priorities to help the council make decisions when somebody comes knocking on the door. I would also note that the HRA, the Port Authority also, they have some criteria for deciding which projects to spend money on. And, and then we always look to our district plans as well to weigh, as we're weighing in on should we or shouldn't we spend any money in these areas? So I, I hope that maybe provides some context.
To be honest, I'm more confused than I was before. When I look to answer my question, but I'll, I'll wait, there's probably more coming. So, but, but thank you. I appreciate the context and I do appreciate the attempt at this. So I think this is a, it's a work in progress and we all got to work towards that, that goal.
Councilmember Beloga.
Mr. Mayor, a little problem with the mute button there. My question is, is really to the council. And while I think that the Lyndale Corridor plan is well thought out, viable plan. I look at it and I say, where's our focus? We have South Loop, we've got Penn America, we've got Normandale Lakes, we've got the commercial nodes that we've talked about and haven't done anything over a five-year period. We have newly the Gateway District and now the Lyndale Corridor. And one of the things that I've always felt is, is that you're more successful if you focus on fewer items and trying to do something over a broad number of areas. We do have, as everybody knows, I suspect, limited resources to assist us in these. And again, I think that the Lyndale Corridor plan is something that we can do, should do. But where does it fall in the priorities of the other commercial, not commercial, the other development areas? Because with that, I think we lose focus and with loss of focus, you lose achievement.
Councilmember.
Thoughts from the others?
Thank you for comments, Councilmember Beloga. I think the things that came to mind when, when you were bringing those points up for me, you, you brought up Normandale Lakes, South Loop, Penn American and so on. I look at, I look at the works at Normandale Lakes and that, that's moving along very well. And frankly, it's, you know, there, there's more to be done there, but it is, it's, it's well along in its, in its life. The same is true, I think, with Penn and American as we, as the BRT stop comes in. And I think the, the housing is completed there. I think in a lot of ways, it's, it's to the point where it's becoming almost self-sustaining or it's picking up speed just because of, of the, the mass that's going on there. South Loop, you know, same way, that's, that's going to be a development district for us for years. Agree 100% on the, the neighborhood commercial nodes that we've been talking about for a number of years. I'm looking at this as like past councils did on those other districts. This is, this is playing the long game. This isn't going to happen overnight. This isn't going to happen in, in the next five or 10 years. This is, this is a long-term commitment by the city to lay a plan out to, to envision how we want to see Lyndale Avenue look. And agreed that if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. I agree with that. But I also think that we, we've got capacity within the city to, to do a number of different things because of the resources that we have and, and the staff and the abilities that we do have on, within the city. And I think given the, the life cycle of some of the other projects that you mentioned, I think it, it makes sense. It's about time to start thinking about other ways that we can keep moving. If I remember, Mr. Bernerson always used to say, we're like a shark. If we stop swimming forward, we're going to die. And so it's to, to look for more options and look for more ways to do that. And so I agree with some of what you said, not all of what you said, but I think it's, it's something that we need to keep in mind and keep our eye on as we move forward.
Couple of comments?
Please.
Normandale Lakes to the west of Normandale Boulevard is reasonably complete. The eastern part of it is not been touched. And that's an area that should be becoming more ripe. Penn America, again, we have the development in those couple blocks. The development area includes the portion north of American Boulevard. And that is something that we have discussed, have discussed with the owners. And I think it, again, with less attention can lie fallow for more time otherwise. So Lyndale, the Gateway District is a huge district. It's a big swath of the entire city. And it's pretty much undefined as to what our priorities are, other than calling that one of the districts. So all I'm saying is, is that trying to remind us that we do need to set priorities. We do need to have the vision and this is the vision for the Lyndale Corridor. And I said that before and I just want to reemphasize that. But the resources again are finite and we have to do projects. I think I've heard Jason say it and Beth say it several times. If you do these projects, you better do them exceptionally well. And you do that by time and attention and focus. So I do appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for those. But I'm looking at allocation of resources. I do feel and I'm supportive of the Lyndale Corridor for planning purposes, doing the rezoning and some of the other things that have been suggested. But I think that the council needs to establish reasonable priorities to what are we going to do? If Normandale Lakes has enough lakes so that we can say it'll carry to the east of Normandale, great. Same with Penn and America. We've got a lot of things and we can then prioritize that further down the line. But I, I feel it's important for us to say where our priorities are. They differ from district to district in their character. Because really, if you look, my estimation, Penn and American today has been housing development project to the greatest extent. To the north of American Boulevard, it's entirely different and, and should be. So this is probably the highest, other than South Loop. Mixed-use area that we will have in the city. So we've got a good plan, I believe. It's just where do we prioritize its execution?
Commissioner Beloga, Mayor, if I may?
Please, we've got a couple other councilmembers who want to chime in as well, but please, go ahead.
Okay, just, just a brief comment that I wanted to make that for the Gateway District, the Lyndale Avenue Corridor is within the Gateway District and this really is a core of the Gateway District. And in addition, in this area along Lyndale is several of those commercial nodes that Julie was referring to a couple of years ago that the council wanted to take a look at. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Just, just real briefly to clarify, because we've, we've used the, the term kind of repeatedly tonight when we say city funding for this. And I think maybe for some folks watching, it may come to mind us just cutting checks to businesses in hopes that they might show up. Are, are we envisioning that this is infrastructure costs? Is this cool TIF financing out of the Gateway District? When, when we say city funding, that's, that's pretty broad and kind of what exactly are we talking about?
Mayor, councilmember, it could be TIF funding. And, you know, TIF is tied to your opportunity housing. So we're talking about, you know, public benefits along with that. It also could be infrastructure funding through your capital improvement program.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, you know, I hear Councilmember Beloga's concerns in terms of the focus. I do think that this allows us to have an additional opportunity. I mean, I look at those other ones, we have plans in there and then you kind of have a certain waiting to see if the market brings forth ideas and investment and dollars to put into those places. I think this provides a little bit of a different investment opportunity for people. You know, as was noted, Penn American, at least to the south of American is largely housing development. This is more mixed use. So, you know, I think in terms of priorities, it's probably going to be based on the market and who's coming forth with ideas and money and, and looking to do projects and find that willing seller, willing buyer and pulling all those things together. So the more opportunities we have, I think the better positioned we are to get investment within the community. Second thing I'd just quickly ask, and maybe this is my memory, but I thought when we looked at these originally that we were looking at this corridor extending west of 35W, almost to Civic Plaza. But maybe I'm misremembering that. Is, is that not part of this plan now for this node?
Mayor, councilmember, maybe Barb can allude to that. This has always been the study area as we've been involved in it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor and the rest of the commission. Yes, that was a original discussion that we had because of the BRT going in and the 98th Street study area there. That was an original discussion, but that was dropped as part of this, this study area just because of how large it was growing and the cost associated with that. Thank you. the study area just because of how large it was growing and the cost associated with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
So just a couple of quick uh quick questions and then a comment. So then if if this is a part of the uh of the Gateway uh District, are we going to see the rest of the Gateway Plan? Is that what's next after this?
Thank you, Councilmember Loman, um, Mayor Bussey and the rest of the council. Um, the Gateway District was uh originally intended to um create these synergies for the TIF District so that as there is redevelopment, um, the, I'm I'm not the expert on TIF unfortunately. Um, but as as that redevelopment is done and those monies are captured, they're able to be used in elsewhere within the district, not just in one location. So the Gateway District was really created to capture those synergies for the TIF dollars.
Yeah, I get the function of that. I get that, but that really wasn't my question. My question is, are we going to see? Because what I thought I heard said earlier was that this is really a part of that gateway idea or district, and we're gonna and so my question is, are we going to continue to see more of that gateway, the other nodes to be a part of this particular review? So I guess the answer would be no, right?
And I'm not really understanding your question. So when you're speaking of other nodes within the gateway, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
So maybe I can just jump in here for a second. Um, and see if I reading you correctly, uh, Councilmember Loman. Um, so the Gateway District does encompass several of the commercial nodes that were identified in the commercial study, like Ninety-Eighth and and Nicollet, for instance, and Portland and American. Um, but the Gateway District was really created, as Barb mentioned, to really kind of be able to pool TIF dollars, and it and it was really focused um largely prioritizing around housing kinds of things. The Lyndale, this this project in and of itself is really more of just the um, again, the sort of the commercial core of the the Gateway District. It was also uh encompassed a couple of the uh commercial nodes that were looked at uh in that previous study. So I don't know if that helps uh to explain that the relationship, but to your specific question, is there intended to be a detailed plan like this for the Gateway District? No, there there never was. Um, the detailed plan was really focused just here on on um Lyndale. Um, HRA staff was also working with uh property owners on some of those smaller nodes. I know at Ninety-Eighth and and Nicollet. Uh, there's been a lot of discussions with the property owners there on some um more site specific redevelopment, but not not a bigger planned kind of thing like this effort has been. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. And I fully understood the gateway to be more encompassing than just residential. I always thought we were also looking at those commercial nodes at the same time. So you you got this council member confused um in terms of that. So I I guess I don't need to ask my secondary question. It's already there. Um, but what I would say is that I think Councilmember Beloga has raised a an important question here. Um, we do need to look at prioritization. Um, and I I do think that uh we need to figure out what we want to prioritize. Um, I for one would like to look at, you know, all of these development districts and areas and uh as a council, uh prioritize these things. Um, I I was hoping that we would move forward on some of these other uh commercial notes. Certainly, these this includes some of them, but uh more of those other areas. And it's something that uh, you know, certainly I talked about um several years ago when I ran for the very first time. So I'm hoping that we can start making some uh some progress on some of those other areas. Uh, I don't know if other council members are are, you know, uh, see that, you know, uh, in terms of this prioritization exercise that uh Councilmember Beloga talks about as being a worthwhile exercise. I for one do. Um, um, so I'll leave at that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I I think there might be a misunderstanding what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. We've got a a planning document in front of us tonight. What we don't have are proposals or specifics about funding for for any part of this. I think beyond a a demonstration project of whether or not we can get a a a path or a multimodal uh path up and down Lyndale Avenue. I I agree ultimately, yes, it it's all part of prioritization. There's prioritization in everything that we do. And ultimately, we've got to decide what's one, what's two, what's three, how we, what we want to go first with, what we want to go second with, and so on. That's not what we're doing tonight. What we're doing tonight is is approving this plan, this long term, big picture kind of plan without any specifics attached to it and deciding whether or not we want to do that. And the question that was asked, you know, should development not meeting this recommendation be part of be part of the not meeting the recommendations of this plan be funded by the city? Uh, frankly, I I can't come up with an example where we have a we have funded any development that doesn't meet the recommendations of a development plan that we have. Uh, so I mean, it's it's almost like I like I said, it was it's not a trick question. This is this is an example that we we've not done this in the past. If there is something that comes forward that doesn't meet our development plan, we simply don't fund it. It's not part of what our overall goal is, and we don't fund it. Um, now, as I said, ultimately, this is a a a planning document, a planning policy document as opposed to do we want to expend specific dollars on specific items? And so we'll we'll get to that point eventually, but where we are tonight is whether or not this planning document is what we want to move forward with. Does that make more sense? I mean, is is are we, I mean, does that kind of frame this up a little bit better? I I agree, we probably have to have this uh prioritization discussion eventually, but I don't think tonight is the time to do that because that's not what we're talking about tonight. All right. If uh no other comments on this, let's uh let's move on. How much how much more do we have here?
Uh, we're almost done. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so uh retail obviously was a big part of this study. Uh, will continue to be a a big part of uh the future of Lyndale, we hope. Um, we know that the pandemic it has um accelerated some trends in retail, like online shopping and smaller footprints, but we're hoping that by concentrating retail, uh, we can um uh really get a lively corridor. So part of the strategy uh is a kind of a critical path in my mind. Um, initiating conversations with large employers. What we found in our initial conversations with these employers is that uh they see the value of revitalization along Lyndale to the benefit of their employees. Uh, they can attract more employees um uh if uh there is an environment around uh their business that they can walk to and enjoy and even live near. Uh, so starting conversations with those large employers about the benefits of uh Lyndale revitalization to their bottom line uh is a first step in the retail strategy, actually. Um, and then a second step would be evaluating see uh how you can expand city programs um into actually loan programs. Um, and what we heard from some of your staff is uh there are certainly particularly some state programs uh that are more utilized than others. We heard that um, there aren't a lot of um uh services yet at the city related to uh deed at the state level, uh Department of um Employment and Economic Development. And so we are recommending that the city evaluate expanding into those type of loan programs to better support uh business and retail. Um, and then once you have kind of um uh some of that research done about what you potentially could as a city um expand uh your services into organizing business meetings, kind of like how we did during this planning process, uh really getting all the businesses in the room. What we found is that all the businesses have their own brand strategies, their own obvious business strategies. Uh, they don't see a collective strategy along the corridor yet. So this is what these business meetings could entail. And even um being hosted by the uh large employers, we asked Thermo King, uh, Antoro and uh Freeway Ford, would you be would you see an interest in, you know, hosting and facilitating conversations with your peers along the corridor? And they were enthusiastic about that. So where these business meetings could head is creating a corridor wide strategic business plan, something that shows how we can all uh work toward a collective whole, uh where the businesses see implementation uh coming from from in this plan to their own uh business. And then one of the options that should be evaluated during that process is the potential for a special service district. So you could really start getting some some common um services along the entire corridor. And, you know, a special service district would really need uh, you know, a certain percentage of the businesses to support it. It's a, you know, it's a pretty extensive process to to opt for a quarter to opt into it. But this would be in a, you know, a a pretty effective quarter for that that common uh organizational structure of a special service district. So that's the retail strategy as it stands now. Uh, we did have in the plan um three uh ideas, broader ideas for uh funding, and then a funding matrix that laid out a variety of uh I think more creative and innovative funding sources to do things like these public realm improvements uh to help support development finance and other things like that. So that is in the plan. Uh, we talked about public private partnerships as a key element of this. Uh, the Brownfield Grant Program, as we talked about, can assess uh sites, but it can also clean up sites. So many cities that get this EPA Brownfield Grant, they'll go for it one round. They'll get the assessments, maybe do some area wide planning or some zoning work. And then they'll get another uh round. Um, and we've had some of our uh Brownfield experts at Stantec do some an initial analysis, and they deem that Bloomington Bloomington uh could be uh very competitive, particularly because you have opportunity zones within your city. So so that is something that we would really recommend uh at the short term, evaluating whether that is something the city is interested in. And then um at a high level, we evaluated something that we were calling the Geographic Equity Fund. It looks a little bit more like tax abatement. We actually have a meeting with your development finance firm, Baker Tilly, on Thursday to talk a little bit more about the specifics just so we can give you a little bit more details and confidence that something like this could be feasible. Uh, but really, it's just a high level idea that we wanted to present to your staff, uh something just more creative to think about. And so really, that's the essence of the suburban retrofit strategy. I we've had some really great discussions over the last hour and a half, two hours. Um, and uh we'd be happy to to take more questions if you want to. Otherwise, the next steps for this would be for us to make the revisions based on planning commission and the discussion here tonight. And then uh, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, city staff would then take it through for the approval process.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman, question?
Oh, no, I don't have a question. I just wanted to comment, uh, basically, just, you know, thanks, staff. You've done a nice job on uh putting together this proposal. I am generally very supportive of uh of getting this a particular plan uh moving forward. Um, uh, just want to let you know how much I appreciate what you've done here.
Couldn't agree more. Councilmember Loman, well said. Council, any other feedback or input? Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a very quick question. It wasn't, uh, obviously, we've we've talked about it before, but it wasn't really sort of touched on tonight. Um, but I I just wanted to to sort of clarify that that everything that you have compiled here, all of the 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 um the proposals and so on, all of this, I mean, obviously, in addition to your own knowledge and experience and so on. Um, but all of this came directly based on feedback provided by residents, businesses, folks in the area. Is that that's correct?
Uh, uh, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Coulter, that's absolutely correct. Um, uh, in particular, your staff did a lot of outreach going directly to uh Normandale, going directly to the farmer's market and other places to get feedback from people who wouldn't normally uh find out about a process like this. So I would say this was a wonderful combination of uh community input, uh market data, um evaluation of existing plans and your feedback.
Thank you. And I I think that I just, I wanted to raise that because I think a lot of times when we have discussions about this kind of thing as a council, it's easy for folks to sort of assume that that we're pushing something ourselves or that we're, you know, we're doing something that that the community doesn't support or doesn't believe in or whatever. But um, I mean, I I think that the core of this process has really been what do, you know, what do businesses, what do folks who live in the area, what do they want? What do they want for the future of of this Lyndale Avenue Corridor? So um, I think it's just, it's really, really important to emphasize that this is not, you know, staff or or council, you know, coming up with our own half cocked ideas, but this is directly based on what we are hearing from folks who live and work in the area. So I just wanted to uh clarify that a little bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter? Councilmember, I believe you're on mute. No, still not hearing you. Still with us, Councilmember Carter? Why don't we go on to uh Councilmember Beloga? We'll double back to you, Councilmember Carter, if we could. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I presumed that all the input was pre pandemic. Is that correct?
Uh, is that all of our uh 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 larger engagement activities happened before uh COVID? Um, and uh then what a lot of what we did during the pandemic, and it was just the timing of the process. Um, we did not halt engagement because of the pandemic. Uh, it was largely completed by that time in early March. And then what we did was we vetted a lot of ideas through you as a council. We vetted ideas through your planning commission. And we vetted ideas extensively through a broad swath of staff and experts.
So is is there a way to look at the data that we've collected through that and see if that will hold post pandemic? Uh, commercial office space uh assumptions, for instance, uh near term. Uh, they seem to be uh pretty weak looking at uh doing seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial office space on this corridor a year. You know, downtown Minneapolis may not have seventy-five thousand new commercial office space for the next many years, uh the way things are currently looking. So is, do we have a um opportunity to look at? And it's it's just to tweak not to say that, you know, the the plan is inaccurate, but it's just to help set what uh the new world uh may look like and what the expectation should be.
I can answer that. Excuse me. So what the plan record, uh, what the analyses have shown is that we're you know, anywhere from roughly fifty to a hundred thousand square feet over the next ten plus years. Um, you know, a lot of people's guess is as good as mine is what what's going to happen in in one year from now, let alone five years from now. Um, what I can say uh as far as trends moving forward, and we see this probably maintaining post pandemic is you're not going to likely see uh particularly in an area like this, you won't see a big office standalone office building come in. Not that you wouldn't allow it. Uh, rather, what we are seeing is a offices wanting to be on like the second floor of a mixed use building, for example. So what I anticipate uh in what we're seeing now and what we anticipate post pandemic is that you're going to see a greater mix of office throughout a district versus a standalone office building.
And and Councilmember, let me add to that uh that uh we did mention this briefly, but the only thing that people know about data during the pandemic is that it's accelerating trends that we are already seeing. So for retail, like I said, online shopping, smaller footprints, like Jason's talking about more incorporation of office space inside mixed use buildings rather than a standalone building that needs to be tenanted. And also uh 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 trends toward being outside and and open spaces and public spaces. Uh, if anyone tells you that they have good data on what's going on during the pandemic, uh, they're wrong. Uh, there isn't enough of a trend. And so, you know, we would love it. We're planners. We love to build based on and our ideas based on uh data. There isn't data yet. And and frankly, where you see data, they're from uh subjective sources like uh Home Builders Association or others like that. So what we are trying to just do is latch on to this idea that it's accelerating existing trends.
Uh, thanks for that information.
Councilmember Carter, should we try it again? Are you there with us? Perhaps not. But I'm getting some interesting feedback here as I talk. Try it one more time, and then you might have to, uh, log out and come back in with this, Jenna. Yep, nope, we're not hearing you. All right. Uh, I, I do want to say, uh, first of all, this is, um, this is not an action item, this was an informational item for us and a discussion item, and obviously, we had some very good discussion, two hours of really good discussion, so thank you very much for that. The, um, we, it will be coming back to us, and this is a draft plan, they're going to make the changes based on what they heard tonight and what they heard from the planning commission. And, uh, at that point, then it will come back again for more discussion. And I think at that point, uh, Mr. Verberi, if I'm correct, that then it is a, a public hearing, we'll have an opportunity then for public input on it, uh, before we adopt the final plan. Is that correct? I see that Barb Wolf is nodding her head, and, uh, even if it didn't rise to the level of public hearing, I would imagine the council would want to get as much input as possible.
Absolutely.
So we'll plan to schedule it as such.
Absolutely. So, uh, if, if anybody's watching and just kind of itching to log in on this, uh, you will have an opportunity. That's, uh, not, the opportunity isn't tonight, but as we consider this as a final version, we'll definitely be taking public input on this. Uh, the presentation will ultimately be online. Right now, the entire report is online, if you wanted to take a look at that. A lot of good information for you to dig through and, and consider if, uh, you've got ideas or questions or suggestions about that. Councilmember Carter, do we want to try it one more time? You are still?
Still.
Not there, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
All right. Well, we will move on, and I would, uh, like to point out, we're at 8:30, and we've got five items left on our agenda here tonight, counsel, so just keep all of that in mind. And next up is, uh, item 8.2, which is a proposed spot transportation safety improvement with our 2021 pavement management program projects. Believe Amy Maron is going to start us off here, and, uh, we've got others from staff to lead us in this discussion.
Yes, good evening, Con, yep, good evening, Council.
Good evening, welcome.
All right. Great. Okay, well, I'm going to share my screen here, and we are excited to be presenting tonight, um, three different spot safety improvements that we are proposing to implement this year with the 2021 PMP project. So tonight, we're going to go through these, um, specific locations where we have improvements that we're recommending for approval. Um, as we go through these, um, we're going to be available to answer questions and have discussion. Um, I'm going to present, present the first one, which is the American Boulevard West segment. Um, Kirk Roberts, our city traffic and transportation engineer, is going to present the 86th Street at Lyndale. And Paul Jarvis, our traffic management coordinator, is going to present the 106th Street at Decatur. All right, so, American Boulevard West, um, we have an opportunity, um, to make some improvements in this area with an overlay project that is along American Boulevard that extends from Green Valley Drive on the west end and then continues to the east all the way to, um, American Boulevard where it intersects Norman Center Drive. And actually, um, much of Norman Center Drive is included in the overlay as well, and Normandale Lakes Boulevard. So have quite a few streets in this area, the public streets, that are going to be with, within this, um, overlay project for this year. And so when we heard about the overlay that it was planned for this year, um, I knew that this was going to give us a good opportunity to address some of the concerns that I have heard from residents and tenants in this area over the past few years. Um, the two issues that I have primarily heard are related to pedestrian safety. So with American Boulevard, um, and, I'm sorry, pedestrian safety. So with a lot of the new development that's occurred in this area, we have, um, some good completed sidewalk networks along American Boulevard. However, an issue that routinely comes up is the fact that there is no controlled, um, intersection or pedestrian crossing location between the traffic signal that is at Norman Center Drive on the east end and all the way over to East Bush Lake Road. So we have all this great developed residential area on the north side of American Boulevard and wonderful recreational amenities at Normandale Lake, but there's not a good access, a good way for people to access that area. Another issue that I've heard routinely from, um, tenants and residents in this area is concern with speeding on American Boulevard. Um, so aside from just the fact that there, that people are going faster than the speed limit, some of the, the impacts of that speeding issue are that it makes it more difficult for people to judge gaps, to do accurate and safe gap selection when they're turning onto and off of American Boulevard from the adjacent driveways and, and public roadways. All right, so this is the section that we started studying this year for American Boulevard. Okay, so this image shows American Boulevard facing toward Normandale Lake Boulevard, facing to the west. Um, currently, American Boulevard is a four-lane undivided roadway with two lanes in each direction. There's some median separation as you move further to the west, closer to East Bush Lake Road. The traffic volumes on this roadway are between 5,000 and 6,000 vehicles per day. Now, we didn't collect traffic data in 2020 when we, when we did this study, um, because we have suspended our traffic data collection during the COVID-influenced traffic times, um, but we are relying on historic traffic volumes in this area. And in fact, we had some, um, data that was collected as recent as 2019. Um, and speed data, we don't have recorded or documented speed data, but we do have a history of working with the, the police department, um, on specific speed concerns in this area and have worked together to deploy speed wagons and speed, temporary speed ra- radar signs, um, to supplement the enforcement in the area. So this is a little bit of the process. It's a, you know, it's a revised process that we're using, given the conditions of, um, that we're working under right now. But we did have our data collection and analysis in 2019. We developed our proposed improvements that fit within, uh, the limits of the, of an overlay project. And an overlay project is, um, no significant curb modifications happen within that project, it is just a rehabilitation of the existing road to road or curb to curb roadway width. Um, we did some public engagement via, um, Let's Talk Bloomington, and we also, um, went to the planning commission on January 28th with this item. So, uh, um, if the council does approve the recommended improvements on this segment, those would be implemented in the 2021 PMP project. All right, so this is a, a more of a closer graphic of Normandale Lake Boulevard at American Boulevard. So in 2019, um, several of the apartment buildings on the north side of American Boulevard were, were starting to have tenants, um, come in. And I, at that time, I received several, um, phone calls from, from new residents that were concerned about pedestrian crossing safety across American Boulevard. Our district plan identifies a traffic signal at this intersection of Normandale Lake Boulevard. And so one of the first things that we did was, um, update our signal warrant analysis to see if, um, the traffic volumes have increased to the point where a traffic signal is now going to be needed, or if it's going to be needed anytime in the near future. Um, when we updated that, it was clear that, uh, the traffic volumes have not grown to the point where a traffic signal is needed or would benefit this area at this time. So we stopped pursuing that as a potential solution at this time. But we did, while we were working on this, um, we did a pedestrian count on June 18th, um, on both sides of this intersection. So this essentially counted all pedestrians that were crossing American Boulevard at or near Normandale Lake Boulevard. And we, um, counted 168 pedestrians, um, crossing, uh, and this was done on a nice summer day on June 18th, 2019. So that's just a, a good example of the type of pedestrian demand that we have there, even without any type of, uh, pedestrian crossing enhancement. Um, so one of the outcomes of looking at the signal warrant analysis was, um, what's another way that we could address pedestrian crossing safety? And, uh, there was, uh, recommendation given from our consultant, say, suggesting that we look at changing the cross-section of American Boulevard. And so, so that's what this study led, led into. All right, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the public engagement that we did. Um, this was Paul and I's first time using Let's Talk Bloomington as a public engagement tool. And so we developed this site, we did a direct mailing to, to this air, to this affected area, which, um, included 80 addresses for the mailing to notify them of the study. And then the Let's Talk Bloomington page had very detailed, um, layout, just like if we were having a public open house, all of the boards were available here, and basically it walked through the story of what the problems are that we're trying to address and our recom- or the options we've looked at and our recommendations for moving forward. So, um, we did have, include a survey, a pretty, pretty short, uh, four-question survey as part of this process. Um, we were asking if people live in the area, work in the area, both, or if they're just a resident of Bloomington that's interested in, uh, traffic situations in Bloomington. We had, um, five that live in the area, one that just works in the area, one that lives and works, and, uh, two that were just concerned residents of Bloomington. So we did end up with, uh, 10 surveys back. The next question was, do you support the proposed striping changes on American Boulevard? And five of the 10 said, yes, I'm generally supportive. Three of the 10 said they were not supportive. And, um, two of the 10 i- indicated other, so that they could provide some additional comments. Um, one was that, yes, they support it, but they would like to see wider bike lanes or shoulders than we've done in the past with our four to three lane conversions. And one indicated that they would like to see a two-lane roadway, um, it's because they're not a fan of that center dual left turn lane. Um, and then a question, another question was, uh, do you support the crosswalk improvement? And I apologize, I realize that I haven't shown what our recommendations are yet, but, um, there's a, upcoming, there is a proposed crosswalk enhancement. And so the proposed crosswalk enhancement, we had eight of 10 indicated, yes, they're supportive, one of 10 said, no, they're not supportive, and one said they would like to see a crosswalk enhancement, but, um, had we considered doing a traffic circle instead? And then lastly, provided an opportunity for the residents to, um, let us know if there's any other traffic issues that we weren't aware of already in this area to make sure that we addressed them. And while things were definitely brought, brought up, it was not, uh, new information. Um, there were concerns with the traffic conditions on 494 and that it leads to cut through traffic in the area and, um, some desires for additional bike connectivity to the east. All right, so getting to what I should have probably led with, which is, um, what our recommended changes are for the cross-section on American Boulevard. So we're recommending, uh, conversion from a four-lane to a three-lane on American Boulevard on this, in this Normandale Lakes District. Um, the, the striping changes to go to this conversion would help us to, um, sorry, I'll get to my notes, would help us to provide a dedicated left turn space. Excuse me. Um, it would help to reduce the outlier speed, so this is an outcome that we've seen in other four-lane to three-lane conversions. Um, we provide a striped shoulder space for cyclists and for the bus stops on this corridor. And it, most importantly, and kind of the main driver at this time, is that it would give us the space to be able to construct a pedestrian refuge island to have a marked signed crosswalk at Normandale Lake Boulevard. All right, and here is a cross-section or a, a graphic that shows the proposed, um, pedestrian, enhanced pedestrian crosswalk that we're talking about at this location. It would be where the center turn lane is, so we'd be able to construct a pedestrian refuge island and still allow left turns into the, the driveway to the north. What this really does is it helps, uh, provide significant pedestrian crossing safety improvement by what is currently a four-lane undivided section that pedestrians have to walk across, um, turning it into essentially the pedestrians having to navigate one through lane of traffic at a time, um, by significantly shortening, shortening the crossing distance and reducing their exposure to vehicles. All right, that was the, the, the quick and easy version, um, of the presentation, but I am happy to go through in an, in any additional detail, um, what we're proposing or any of the comments that we've received.
Counsel, questions on this? I do have one on, Ms. Maron, you, you'd mentioned that the average daily vehicle count back when you did one was like, uh, five or 6,000 vehicles, I think you said. What, uh, what, what is the typical number of vehicles that we see when we go on this, when we do projects like this road diet, when we go to the four lanes to three lanes? Is it, is it greater than that? Is it about that number, uh, less than? What, what, what is this, how does this compare?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question to help put this into context a little bit, because it has been a while since we've, um, come before the council with these proposed striping changes. Um, we have very, very successfully done striping conversions from four-lane to three lanes on roadways with traffic volumes between 5,000 and 16,000. Honestly, it's not until, I think the highest that we've done is 17,000, and that is West 106th Street, um, you know, on that segment between Xerxes and 35W. And that's the only location where we have gone back and routinely evaluated it because we're pushing at the upward limits of the volumes where, um, where it, uh, has a different feel, for sure. But, um, we, you know, we did some analysis at the signalized intersection here at American Boulevard and Norman Center Drive, and essentially, people are driving this, are, they're already getting in the lanes as if it's a three-lane with the dedicated turn lanes. So there's really, um, we do not expect any increase in delay by making these changes on this section of American Boulevard.
So the, the 5,000, the, the, the three, the three-lane configuration could certainly handle the 5,000 or 6,000 per day that you counted at one point?
Absolutely.
Okay, and, and even with the expected development over there, I'm not even sure what we would expect, you know, if, if it fills in completely over there, what the number would be in terms of, uh, number of vehicles that would be expected. The other big bump that we see is when 494 is backed up and people jump off. Do we have any idea what those high numbers would be? And I ask that question knowing full well, if they do jump off, I think I would prefer a three-lane configuration to slow them down a little bit, because if they're jumping off, they're sitting in traffic and frustrated and probably tempted to speed through that area. So I wouldn't mind the three-lane configuration in that case.
Um, Mayor Bussie and Council, I, I don't know, um, traffic vol- we have, I don't think we've accidentally, uh, captured the volumes on a day when, um, traffic is completely jumping off of 494, but I would second what you're saying, you know, we could handle, easily handle a triple of the, the vol- the existing volumes before we would see any significant delays. And, uh, to your point, um, that this cross-section, you know, if it's, if it is cut through traffic, adding a little delay is not, not the worst thing that could happen.
Not at all, not at all. Counsel, other questions on this? More discussion? I do not see hands up at this time. Uh, are we going to take these one at a time, or do you want to do them all at once? Or how, how would you like to consider these, uh, as to whether or not to include in the PMP? What would be best here?
Mayor Bussie, I think, um, I would recommend that we move through, through and present all three of these. At the end, I do have information that this segment of American Boulevard West and the last one, the 106th Street, um, direct mailings did go to the neighborhood indicating they would have an opportunity to talk to council. So I believe that we will want to, um, postpone the decisions or extend and hold this as a public hearing at the next meeting, but I'll let, um, the, the city manager, Verberi, weigh in on that.
Sounds good. And, and to be clear, not a public hearing, but rather a public comment on this, so we'd be able to take, take some testimony, to take some feedback on this, is what we would do. Okay? That sounds good. Okay, onward, please.
All right, council, council members, this is Kirk Roberts, um, traffic and transportation engineer. So I wanted to talk to you about 86th Street at Lyndale Avenue. This 86th Street, uh, between Old Shockley Road and about Penn Avenue is a significant east-west multimodal corridor over the city. Uh, it connects up, Amy, if you want to go to the next slide here. It connects up roughly across the city as you get out to Xerxes Avenue and heads to the south. Um, so it's a fairly significant corridor for bikes and pedestrians in the city. Um, so it's a fairly significant corridor for bikes and pedestrians in the city. The area specifically I'm going to talk about is the intersection of eighty-sixth street and Lyndale. So one more slide forward there. By way of history, uh, in twenty-ten, uh, we took a study similar to what Amy just ran through with you to look at uh the four lane configuration and see if that could be converted to three lanes to create a nice multimodal corridor across the city, including the bike lanes on the shoulder. Just to better serve the needs of the traveling public. One area of concern uh with that during the study was what would happen at Lyndale Avenue. And for some context, Lyndale Avenue in the area of eighty-sixth street carries about fourteen thousand cars a day. So it's a pretty big, busy north-south route. Eighty-sixth Street gets about seven thousand cars eastbound and westbound. So collectively, that intersection gets around twenty-one thousand cars per day. So Mr. Mayor, in reference to your earlier comment, seven thousand cars a day east and west is well within that parameters for a three lane intersection or a three lane road, except when you hit a busy intersection like this. And as part of this study, there was a lot of concern expressed by the council, the planning commission and residents about what happens at this particular intersection. How do we make this better, improved multimodal experience for people without creating undue delay for drivers or other roadway users? And that all sort of came to a head here at Lyndale Avenue. Uh, so the decision was to maintain the four lanes across Lyndale. Amy, if you want to advance one, the way that we did that was we terminated the bike lanes a couple hundred feet east and west of the intersection. Cyclists on the corridor then have to use the shared lane with traffic as they approach the signal and wait for the green. Uh, that was a decision at the time, and one more slide, this just kind of shows the queuing there. And this isn't uh showing exactly how the queuing works, that the number of cars stacked changes throughout the day. But this is just the general idea that that cars now have two lanes to wait for that through movement and the bicycle lane terminates. That was a decision we made, the intersections operated since twenty-ten in that configuration. Twenty-twelve, um, Bob Simons and the infrastructure group came along and they repaved Lyndale Avenue to the east of the intersection. Part of the work that they also did was they improved the signal, they rebuilt the traffic signal cabinet, put a new traffic signal cabinet in with the latest operational equipment, the latest operating software. They also replaced the protected left turns there, the standard three section red, yellow, green arrows, with the what we've now come to know as the flashing yellow arrows that are in place now. That um, then um, as part of that, we also added communications to the signal and we updated the coordinated timing plan. So the intersection as a whole is operating more efficiently than it's ever operated in the past. And it was certainly operating more efficiently in than it was in twenty-ten when this multimodal corridor came through. So here we are ten years later, uh, Bob and his staff are set to grind out the pavement on the east side of the intersection now, or sorry, the west side of the intersection. We've got some ideas for restriping. What we're proposing to do is restripe both sides of the intersection down from the two lanes in each approach, and that's what you're seeing on the top pane of this slide, down to a single lane on each approach, and extend the bicycle lanes across the intersection. Amy, if you want to move it one more slide, and this slide shows those bike lanes in green. So that as you're approaching the intersection on a bike, you don't have to share that through lane with traffic, which is legal, but a little bit uncomfortable if you're on a bicycle waiting for a green light. Here's uh again, another slide just showing the queuing. The idea here uh is that cars now just have a single lane to queue in. And so they will queue back a little bit further than they have with the the multiple lanes, but not much further back in most conditions, because that second curb lane never gets well used when people know that they have to merge just on the other side of the intersection. Um, and so cars will queue back a little bit longer. But we also modeled that change. And what we found from that modeling, and this was using traffic volumes before the pandemic hit, so they're higher than what you would see out there today. But using those volumes and modeling this, there's no significant level of service change or no real significant added delay uh currently with the change. And over a twenty-year horizon, using growth factors that we don't frankly expect to see, we can manage this thing well over our twenty-year planning horizon. Most significantly is that with minor timing changes, which we can do very easily now with the new equipment and the communications and the technology that we've put into place, queues will always clear on the onset of a green. So if you're waiting here on eighty-six, you're waiting for the green light, you get the green light, you're not going to have to wait through multiple green lights to get through there. The cars will all queue, queue through the intersection each time. That's the thing that causes a lot of delaying, gets a lot of people very frustrated. So that's what we're proposing. And so, Council, in context, this is a fairly minor change. But this, what happened at Lyndale was a significant part of the original twenty-ten study. Both the planning commission and the council sought to create a multimodal facility that would serve the public well, but wouldn't delay uh any one portion of the of the mobile community. Since that time, the cities continue to invest in our infrastructure. We've convinced you, continue to invest in technology, and we've put money into traffic operations. And because of those investments, we can now create a facility that better serves the needs of all users uh without penalizing any one user specifically. And so I'm here seeking council support for that change tonight. This is not something we notified the public or or seeking, sought public input on, so it's the council's decision, we're bringing it forward, looking for that support. And with that, I, if there's any questions?
And I do see two hands up already, Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Coulter. And then Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Kirk, I just had a quick question um, in that area about safety, particularly with the um, uh, what is it now, Speedway there? There's multiple entrance and exits, including a back one there that would be crossing this bike path there. Are, how are the safety issues with that um managed, mitigated, or is that a concern in your mind?
Councilmember Nelson, that that is an issue. And if you, the plan that we talked about previously, the the Lyndale corridor plan, one of the things that that plan sought to do was limit the accesses. Um, and so there is a generalized safety issue anytime you have more driveways over a bike lane. That said, if we can delineate the bike lane well, which we intend to do here, make it very visible so everybody understands what's happening and what they can expect from that particular section of street, it should be mitigated to the extent that it can be. So it's not an acute safety issue, it's something we think about. But the idea here is just, let's make sure that we develop a striping plan where everybody knows what's going on, they know what to expect from users and know where they can expect them, and that's as safe as we can make that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, um, Kirk, just a a quick question. It's a little bit unclear from the information that we have. But the actual four-three conversion, what are the the east and west boundaries of the the actual change you're propon- proposing here? Where does it, I mean, I guess if you want to go east to west, where does it start on the east and where would it end on the west as far as what, what would change?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, I just focused on the west side of the intersection. It's similar on the east side, but just to keep my diagram simple, I just showed the one side. And so roughly, it would run from Aldrich Avenue on the west side. And then on the east side, it reverts back to a three lane, um, somewhere between Garfield and Harriet. So it would stay basically three lanes from Aldrich Avenue across the intersection all the way where it picks up again at Harriet Avenue.
Okay, okay, so that it's just that like two, three-ish block stretch that is actually being proposed to change here?
Councilmember Coulter, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Kurt, uh, good evening. The, in your diagram on the green, is that a concrete divider?
Councilmember Beloga, in the middle of the road there, there is a green um island. Yeah, that's just a center, a concrete raised center, concrete island, yep. I just put it in green for clarity purposes.
Sure, and I, I just wanted to verify that uh it was what what I thought it was, so thank you.
My purpose there was to just demonstrate that I have no real graphic skills, but there you are.
Far better than mine. And if you could go to the last slide before questions? Yes, that one, thank you. Whoop, what, that one. So since the queue is longer, have we found any anecdotal, anecdotal information that says people at the back of the queue try to get through the light, even if it may be green and are speeding and causing any uh accidents at light changes? So they do not get hung up for multiple sign uh sign changes?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, you can have that if you have bad signal timing. Um, if drivers that have used this intersection and are familiar with it have this sense that they can get cut from that green time, um, then yeah, you can have some bad driving. And and that's why I focused a little bit on the ability that we have to deal with that signal remotely, the new equipment and everything, so we can make sure that we keep the timing up to date so that we don't have bad timing. And it's not to point fingers, but sometimes on some of our north-south routes um, in the city, there's very long cycle lengths for the north-south traffic, and you do have to wait a while on the side street. Even in those instances, though, you don't see, as long as the signal is timed well, you don't see people behaving badly to try to get through that green. And so as long as we keep the timing up to date, that should not be an issue.
Okay, thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? I don't hear of any, so why don't we continue on?
Ah, looks like it's my turn. Uh, this is uh Paul Jarvis, I'm the uh traffic management coordinator for uh engineering. Uh, the third project we're looking at tonight is the intersection improvement at one hundred and sixth and Decatur Avenue. Uh, for reference, we're kind of in the southwest corner of Bloomington. Uh, one sixty-nine is kind of on the left there, and we're just north of uh, uh, Old Shockley Road. Uh, the area is primarily a single-family residential with some multifamily quad homes that are along uh Decatur, and City Parkland is on the south side of one hundred and six. I think that's Cavell Park. I think we're the next slide. Next slide, please. I think I need the second slide.
Is it working?
I think we're seeing a delay back and forth, and I think we just lost Paul, actually. Paul, are you with us still?
I don't think it's working. I'm still with you, can you hear me?
You're kind of cutting in and out a little bit. Perhaps if you uh, if you turned your camera off and just did audio for us for now, it might uh clear up some of the transmission issues.
I'll give that a, I'll give that a try. Is that better?
So far, so good.
So far, so good. So we're on the second slide. To frame then, let's go, let's see where I'm at my notes now. Uh, to frame the uh project, the uh why we're here, uh, the short answer is we have all too many accidents occurring at the residential intersection. Uh, the goal for the project is to reduce or eliminate the crash problem at this intersection. Uh, we have an average of about one accident per year. That may not seem like a lot or uh at the time, but the severity uh of the accidents, whether personal or property damage, has been rather high. Uh, all the accidents have been vehicles leaving the roadway and ending up on or in some cases in private property. Uh, staff has worked with the residents of this area in the past to do some minor improvements and additions. Uh, we added uh curb warning signs, Chevron signs on the westbound direction, and we've added and improved the overhead street lighting. Uh, the two thousand twenty-one PMP project overlay project gives us the opportunity to make some further changes to help alleviate the problem. We go to the third slide, please. Uh, we're proposing adding concrete medians at the entrances to Decatur uh street curbs on the Decatur side and on the one hundred and sixth street side, so two medians. Uh, the lower left-hand corner of the slide kind of shows you a bit of an example of what the uh proposed medias will look like. Uh, the primary goal is to narrow the roadway driving lanes to give the drivers a visual cue to slow down. Secondary benefits of the medians can use as a neighborhood gateway treatment, reinforcing the, to the motorists, your transition, transitioning from a collector type roadway of one hundred and sixth street onto a residential street of Decatur. Uh, the design of the medians uh tonight, uh, these are just kind of the primary design. We haven't worked all the way through final design yet. They're likely to be a little bit shorter, not quite in coaching on the driveways as much as they are. Uh, medians width will be somewhere between six and eight feet. And that would give the driving lane between the median and the curb of about fourteen feet. That, that would be the medium, the minimum uh lane width. Uh, we've heard from residents in the area uh that are concerned now with just the accidents, but vehicle speeds along one hundred and sixth street. To solve those problems, that would probably be a little bit the larger of of uh corridor study. The addition of these medians at this time would not really affect the the traffic calming measures at on one hundred and sixth street if we move forward with something like that in the future. Uh, staff has received uh caught four resident uh concerns and uh regarding this project. And all those correspondence we got this past week are included in your council packets. And I can go to slide four, and we just have one change that we'll have to make to the parking. Currently, parking is allowed along uh Decatur Avenue and a short segment, one hundred and sixth street east of Cavell. Uh, there's no parking allowed. The areas I've got highlighted there, we'd have to remove parking. Uh, they wouldn't be enough room between the median and the curb. And next slide, and we're here to stand for questions.
Council questions of Mr. Jarvis on this one? I guess my only concern, Mr. Jarvis, is looking at the uh, the example you've got on slide three. Uh, the number of tire marks on that uh median had me a little concerned, but I'm sure that's just an example and not indicative.
I think it's just an example, yeah.
Okay, good enough, good enough. Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, and my only question, and I think this is for Paul, but maybe um, I think we already answered or addressed part of it, is just um, are we working with the residents? Um, I know there's a homeowners association in that area that has some concerns, and from what I heard, we probably won't actually need to take action on this until the uh twenty-second. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were working with those residents to look at this option, look at other options, whatever makes sense there so that um everyone kind of understands what the plan is.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson, we uh did talk to the uh homeowners association president today, and that we kind of explained where we're at in, uh, we've, I think we've come to an understanding what the, what they want, and they know we're gonna uh delay this till, until they can meet.
Okay, that, that was honestly the only thing that I wanted to do is just make sure that uh we got time for that input and that communication and and work it through with the neighborhood here, so appreciate it.
Councilmember Martin, was your question answered? Your hand is down now, is uh?
Councilmember Nelson got me covered, thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Council, additional questions on this? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Hey, we can, very good, welcome back.
Okay, awesome. Um, yeah, Paul, can you just take a couple minutes and talk a little bit about the resident concerns? I just want to make sure I'm adequately or accurately understanding kind of what some of the concerns and major issues have been.
Uh, so far, looking at the public input, we've got uh one, one resident is concerned more of the overall speeding along the one hundred and sixth street corridor. He thinks that's more the contributing factor to the accidents. Another one is kind of north, is a little more concerned with uh the placement of the median and and whether he can uh get in and out of his driveway. Uh, I've talked to both those people in person or on the phone and tried to alleviate their concerns of the design. And we're going to talk more at a later date probably about the speeding concerns along one hundred and sixth street. We have in the past done a few speeding uh details with the police department. Uh, we've had a radar sign in the westbound direction, uh, about halfway between Cavell and uh Bloomington Ferry in the past. Uh, the radar sign lasted for about two or three years, and after that, the effect starts to kind of wane. And we've also had some, experienced some uh vandalism of a sign too, so that predicated us removing it. And we've also had some, experienced some vandalism of the sign, too, so that predicated us removing it.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that there will be some broader conversations around 106th and the speed issue, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick follow-up on those concerns for the kind of the whole length there of 106th, the speeding and things like that. It sounded like what I heard earlier is that to really get our arms around those would take additional study. Am I understanding that correctly? And would it make sense? Because this is being done as part of the PMP program for this year. Does it? I guess my question is, does it make sense to move forward with this segment if there are open questions that can't be answered before that, or would a delay of a year make any sense, or is it possible?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Councilmember Nelson, I'm not sure I have the qualifications to answer that question. That's more of the construction team. I can imagine their dismay if I went back and made it, said yes or no to this question. I think Julie Long may be also in on this conversation. She might be able to shed better light on that.
Councilmember Carter and Council, you know, in the past, this isn't completely new that when we're ready to do a project, that, you know, residents bring up some issues and concerns. Given the length of 106th Street, this is a pretty substantial segment. And as Paul noted, I don't think, well, we know that adding the center medians, they're specifically to address this crash and safety concern that we have right at the corner. And I don't want to confuse that with the general, with just general neighborhood concerns about speeds. You know, we think that these serve a specific function, and they certainly would not preclude any other initiatives that we might want to do in the future, you know, after working through a process with the neighborhood. So I, my recommendation is to try to consider them a little bit separately. And this is a pretty localized spot problem that we've worked through all other non-infrastrucure techniques to try to address. And we think that these can help address the issue at the curve, the safety at the curve. And then we have our local street traffic management program that we can work through the speed concern issues with the neighborhood under that separate program.
Councilmember Nelson, answer your question there?
Yeah, that did. Thank you for the information. And again, I appreciate everyone working with the residents in that area and helping to address their concerns and whether it's in one project or two projects, or, you know, how that ends up working out. I get confidence you guys will come up with a good plan, and so, thank you.
Council, anything additional? I don't see anyone coming forward. Ms. Marone, you promised that we were going to bring this on home.
All right. Well, I just wanted to do, quickly say that we did speak with the planning commission at their January 28th meeting, and included in your packet was their recommendation of approval of the three proposed spot transportation safety improvements. We did do notification to, as I mentioned, to 80 residents via direct mail in the American Boulevard area and to 300-plus properties on the 106th Street area. And so I think there's a little bit of confusion about how to provide the opportunity for them to comment at this time. So our recommendation is that we would continue those two elements, but if you're willing to make a recommendation on, or an approval on the Lyndale, the 86th Street modifications at Lyndale, then we can move forward with getting those into the project plans.
So is there, is there harm in moving, putting a delay on all three until the 22nd, or? My inclination right now is to, just to take this package, all three that we've talked about this evening, to hold it off and consider it again on the 22nd. Notify who we need to notify and use the opportunity then on the 22nd for public comment on this type of thing. Is there, is there any harm in doing all three, or?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kirk Roberts. There's no harm in moving the 86th Street issue to that meeting as well.
Let's do that. That would be my recommendation, then. I think that give us an opportunity to continue to work with residents, make sure everybody understands what we're doing, and give them the opportunity to provide some feedback on the 22nd or beforehand. If they want to call or email us directly, they could do it then as well. So that would be, that would be my thought. Council, yours as well?
And as I understand it, Mr. Mayor and council members, staff will move forward on the couple stretches that are related to state aid, and we'll start working with MinDOT. And if there's any change in council's feeling, we can pull back on the 22nd.
Sounds good. Sounds good. So what I would, what I would offer, then, I would, I would move that we table a decision on item 8.2, which is the spot safety improvements, including American Boulevard striping modifications and pedestrian crosswalk enhancement in Normandale Lake Boulevard, West 86th Street striping modifications at Lyndale Avenue, and West 106th Street medians at Decatur Avenue. And we hold those off until our February 22nd meeting, where we will have an opportunity for public comment on those items.
I'll go ahead and second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Got a motion and a second to table these items until the 22nd? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So yes, if we can continue to get the notifications out there, use our social media as necessary, and our communications means to let folks know what we're talking about, and invite public comment on the 22nd. I think we'll be in good shape to, to make sure that we can make a good decision with everybody understanding exactly what we're doing. So please, if we could do that. Let's move on then to item 8.3, which is a presentation by our friends from Metro Transit. Metro Transit update on the proposed route changes. Obviously, we've got the orange line bus rapid transit under development already. If you've missed that, you haven't been by 494 and Lucky 13 is because they've been working on that tunnel for quite some time now. And ultimately, the, the orange line is going to run from Burnsville all the way to downtown Minneapolis. And as bus rapid transit, it would be consistent. I'm trying to remember all my talking points for bus rapid transit. Consistent, consistent timing, prepaid, so onboarding, and then upgraded shelter options as well. If I'm remembering all those, Glenn, I'm sure you'll correct me if I missed anything there. But those are the, the possibilities with bus rapid transit, but also coming with bus rapid transit and the orange line are some changes on the proposed bus routes that also serve Bloomington. And so, Mr. Market Guard, good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here. And I know you've got a number of folks from Metro Transit with you as well.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie, council members. We are joined tonight with my three Metro Transit staff members, who I will introduce Cindy Harper, John Dillery, and Juan Rangel. And they've been working on a plan to modify bus service to interface better with the orange line, as you mentioned. And the orange line does start service later this year. So there are some significant changes, and tonight they will present those changes and look for any feedback you have. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Cindy Harper.
Good evening, Ms. Harper. Welcome. Thanks for being with us this evening. Are you with us, Ms. Harper? Ms. Harper, are you there? How about Mr. Dillery? Are you with us, Mr. Dillery?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
Thanks for the introduction, Glenn. Thanks, Cindy Harper. I heard her just a minute ago, I thought.
Okay, we can, we can see if she can make her way back. But if not, if you want to get us kicked off perhaps on the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, leave. She may be dialed in as well as on the WebEx. There may be a dial-in number to unmute.
Glenn, would you send me a chat with the digits of the phone number I'm looking for?
Will do. Well, I can wing it unless maybe Cindy's calling in. Let's see.
Why don't we give her just one more minute, see if we can?
Sure.
Ms. Harper?
She usually calls.
I don't have a caller with those digits.
All right, we don't have a caller with the digits that we're looking for. Mr. Dillery, we might have to rely on you to wing it if we, if we could.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've presented this or heard presentations, so I probably can't. I see an application, something about viewing Cindy Harper's application on my screen, but I don't know what that means. I think I hear her.
Yes. Hi, everyone.
There she is. Good evening. Ms. Harper, welcome.
Ah, good evening. Yeah, I'm sorry. I threw. Anyways, okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. See if I can share my screen very quickly.
And there, it looks good. If you just enhance it to full screen, I think we're ready to go. You are money. Perfect. Thank you.
Is that any better?
That looks perfect. Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, all right. I'm going to go as fast as I can here before I lose my connection again. Good evening. As the, as Glenn mentioned, Metro Transit is on schedule to open our Metro Orange Line later this year. Runs between downtown Minneapolis, Richfield, Bloomington, and Burnsville. And since we expect many of the orange line riders to use transit to get to the stations, the connecting bus network is very important. In order to maximize the extent and access to benefits to the new Orange Line, the goals of our project include connecting more than 50,000 jobs outside of downtown and 80,000 residents in the study area with the new Highway BRT line, prioritizing essential trips, those who rely on transit the most. And of course, we're always looking for an opportunity to simplify our routes, make them easier to use and more convenient. Map on the right shows our study area. It includes the Orange Line in the middle, which is the, the orange highlight there, as well as 11 key routes shown in blue. These are routes that have changes proposed. And then also, there's five routes that are shown in a darker gray line. These are routes that also will serve an Orange Line station, but don't have any changes proposed. On the right is a map of the proposed route changes. In the interest of time, I will cover the proposal at just a high level, but if there is a specific area or route in Bloomington that you'd want to learn more about, then please ask, and we can certainly show more detail. Since we aren't sure what the transit market and travel demand will look like when the Orange Line opens this year, we have two scenarios. Scenario A matches today's level of resources, and scenario B reflects the pre-pandemic service hours. Scenario A meets our goals of replacing local service not covered by the Orange Line and improving connectivity between the Orange Line and jobs and other key destinations. Routes 535 and 597 express service are replaced in part by the Orange Line and also by local branches that are through the concept plan with restructured and new routes making connections at Orange Line stations. There's four new suburban local routes, including an all-day service on Lyndale Avenue, Route 534, between American Boulevard and 98th Street Station. Also proposing the restoration of Route 542 on American Boulevard, which has been suspended since the beginning of the pandemic, and a new 98th Street crosstown alignment, providing a direct connection between the 98th Street Station and Normandale College, as well as improved access to jobs. In addition, taking this opportunity to simplify two routes, the 515 and the Route 540. 540 is in Bloomington on just north of 494, 76, 77 Streets. Currently has three different patterns, and we're going to standardize it so all the trips do exactly the same thing. If demand returns, scenario B helps build on scenario A by restoring Route 535, I'm sorry, Route 537, which is a route on France Avenue between Southdale, Normandale College, and Valley West. It's currently suspended service. Adding weekend service on that new Lyndale route that I mentioned just a moment ago, between American and 98th Streets. Currently, we only have weekday service. And also adding weekend service to Route 542 on American Boulevard. Scenario B also allows us the opportunity to improve the frequency and span, so how often and how early in the morning, how late in the evening, five different routes operate. We're in the heart of our outreach and engagement phase. We're getting the word out using a variety of approaches listed here. We are emphasizing the project website and online engagement, but we've also been out talking with riders, of course, maintaining a safe social distance. It's very important to us. We make sure we hear from a diverse set of riders, keeping in mind that not everyone who is interested in this plan is back riding with us yet. After our public comment period ends on February 22nd, we will review all of the feedback and modify our proposal as needed. And these changes will be implemented when the Orange Line opens, currently scheduled for late 2021. And I'd be happy to take any questions, or if you have any more specific questions, John can help me out as well, please.
Thank you. Council questions on this? Councilmember Loman?
So just two, two quick questions. One, has this at all been, this plan at all, this is kind of where our question for our staff, been taken through our equity coordinator? At all in terms of making some suggestions around this?
Ms. Market Guard?
Yes, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Loman. Our community outreach and engagement division has been involved, but to my knowledge, I'm not aware that it has been through the equity process. I would invite Tracy Smith to add anything on that if she has any information.
Ms. Smith, are you with us this evening?
I am.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Loman, we, we have not taken it through a specific process through our racial equity coordinator, but what we have done in outreach and engagement is shared with both our Latino community leaders and our Black and African community leaders. The outreach efforts that Metro Transit is, has offered here that you can see on your slide to make them aware of the opportunities for them to provide feedback. And we, we have also talked to those groups to let them know that if they would like an opportunity to meet with either Cindy or John or Juan, that they've indicated that they would be willing to come out and do like a one-on-one or do a Zoom, you know, one-on-one type of session to share this information. And the way that those groups in Bloomington have been working is they like to be presented with topics that may be pertinent to them and decide on whether or not it fits into the meetings that they have regularly with some of our staff. And so that, that information has been shared with them, and as of yet, they haven't indicated that they would like a separate meeting. But they have been given the information so that they can respond to Metro Transit's. But they have been given the information so that they can respond to Metro Transit's engagement opportunities.
Thank you for that, just to kind of give an update. I just, I'm always curious when working on just a variety of different things. If, you know, what what we've done from a, from an engagement kind of standpoint, and I know certainly the Metropolitan Transit Authority has, you know, a very in depth process in which they kind of go through, and so it's not maybe not necessary. But I wanted to just ask that question on this particular one. And so then my other question that I had was around, just while I was looking through the slides. I did notice that, you know, there's a certain area of concentrated poverty, not too far from where I grew up, in fact. And so as we, as we look at you know, bus and transportation, really across the city. And for those folks, and I know that, you know, from a council standpoint, you want to kind of, you know, try to get your bus in certain areas where you've got that concentration of people generally. What, what are we doing in terms of, of that thinking in terms of across the city? Maybe this is kind of a city question, kind of a council kind of question. In terms of that, but then also in terms of making sure that folks generally have that transportation option. How, you know, what are the, what are the factors that that we're utilizing to make sure that that people, you know, are not one concentrating the, you know, the transportation in one spot, but people also can move in other parts of the city of Bloomington and also have access to transportation across the city broadly.
Mr. Mayor and council members, not quite sure I 100% understand the question, but is it about the idea of being able to move east, west across the city or just overall mobility?
Oh, let me ask the question differently. You had a slide, I'm not sure if I could, which one you have up here. You've got one where you've got, you've got concentrated poverty. And maybe it's, it was in the presentation that I saw. When you're looking to try to put together routes. You've got folks that are concentrated. So what I'm curious about is how do you, what are your factors that you use, you know, so one might be, you know, the the ability, you know, because like when I used to ride the bus, so I used to ride the bus a long time ago. One of the things that was useful is that I could walk, you know, to the end of 86th Street, catch the bus at the end of the, end of the block. And the other thing is the, the amount of time it takes, that repetition, you know, how quickly they come. And I know that when I was a kid, it was an hour, an hour and a half to, to, to get that, that bus. And as I got older, it got quicker. It would come quicker, you know, at the end of 86th Street and Fifth. So as we look, you know, not only in that area, either east or west, north or south, what are the factors that you're kind of utilizing to kind of to try to best service that, that group of people, that, that demographic of folks? Does that question make, make sense that if I put that, I know there's a lot I'm asking there, but I'm just curious how you kind of make that decision up. So that's the question I kind of have for, for Metro Transit. And then I guess the question I have for the city of Bloomington is how are we actually able to make sure that those folks that are within the city of Bloomington are, you know, best able to get access to this particular resource?
Okay, um, well, I think one of the things I do want to point out about the study area, and, you know, certainly as we were crafting our plans, we were taking a look at a variety of different factors. We were looking at not only certainly where Black Indigenous people of color are living, also looking at where we have lower income communities living. Looking also at where jobs are at. That's one of the big characteristics, I think, of this particular study area is really the number of jobs outside of downtown. Everybody knows, of course, about the 494 corridor, but also 94th and James area industrial park, as well as out in southwest Bloomington. Old Chocopee and Hampshire, that area. And so one of our main objectives is to make sure that we're getting folks to, to jobs and to those other opportunities in the study area, even if they don't necessarily live in the study area. And that's where the connections and the integrating the Orange Line into the rest of the region really becomes important. Also, didn't talk about this much since this is further north on the line, but the line does include stations at Lake Street and at 46th Street. So the idea is it benefits, it's kind of benefits in both ways. The idea, it certainly opens up. There's a lot of jobs right at Lake Street, the Wells Fargo Home, Home Mortgage, the Alina Hospital campuses. So it'll open, we'll have a connection there. So it improves access to people who live in Bloomington to get to those jobs, as well as people who live along Lake Street. Trying to get out to jobs in Bloomington and Richfield. So that's certainly something we've taken into consideration as well. In terms of, you know, this, we're, we're doing our best to try to build as much as we can within the, the city, a grid of sorts. And so the, the benefit of having a grid is that then it makes transfers between routes easier, and it really does expand the mobility, the, the places you can get to within a, a certain amount of time. And this, you know, this plan is, as I mentioned, you know, the, a new service along Lindale Avenue, you guys were the, I know the council received a presentation on that earlier this evening. You know, that's currently right now is pretty limited service, and we're proposing to have that be a route that runs all day every 30 minutes. Similar on, on Penn Avenue between American Boulevard and Valley West Shopping Center, Normandale College, Route 536, which is new, that's another one. So really trying to, you know, put in those puzzle pieces so that folks you know, can mix and match their, their travel options within the city. John, I don't know if you have any other anything to contribute on that or any other thoughts?
This is John Dillery. Yes, Cindy, you covered it well. Only thing I would add is the transit stations opportunities about much more than the Orange Line. It's part of the story, not the whole story. These are good locations to safely, reliably arrange connections between these lines. And you open up new opportunities if you're willing to make a transfer oftentimes between, say, Eastern Bloomington and destinations west of 35W and vice versa. It's about the transfers, it could locations designed for transfers.
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, if I may add to that a little bit. Just some additional information on those populations, specifically some of those in poverty that we're also reaching out to. In addition to some of our BIPOC population that I mentioned to. If there is a benefit of COVID, I would say one of those is the relationships that we've developed, that coed our outreach and engagement division has developed not just with our Latino and Black African groups, but also with our faith communities, our multi unit housing and the businesses, many of which are around this area. And we have weekly emails that go out to those various different groups that share information such as the proposed changes here in the Orange Line. So that is an area that we can continue to. We have shared this engagement and as changes continue to happen in this process and the Orange Line takes effect later in the fall, we can continue to work through those channels and make sure that they're aware of how they can tap into these new routes, new changes and benefit from them.
Well, thank you for both those, those, all three of those responses regarding to this particular issue. Thank you very much, Tracy. I know you've been working on this for, for years with the city, and I appreciate your, your work here in the city of Bloomington with these populations and your work going forward. So again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to see how this pans out. It's a long process, and I appreciate the idea of having a, this whole grid working across the city to improve those transfer times and folks being able to move across the city. That will make for a large improvement. I know that I did see that improvement when I was riding the bus more readily across the city, and I hope that we'll continue to be able to do that. I know there are service level needs that you have in order to meet, meet those things. So I'm very resonant of that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I can tell you, Councilmember Loman, that the, the factors that they talked about, that these are not one offs. This is typical in how they do route planning with, with, with anything with Metro Transit. And I know just because of my work with Riverview Corridor, and we actually just had this discussion last week. Routes, stops, frequency, it's, it's all fact driven by the number of people, population density, population centers, job centers, people below the poverty line, people of color. And so all of these, all of those factors I know go into their decisions about routes and stops and frequency and so on. So I, it's, they, they do good work and they, it's fact based and it's, it's based on the information that needs to go into that if they, if they really want to make this as effective as possible. So. Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, just a technical question. The new road, I think it's 539, does that still go to the 28th Street Station? Arkenwright area, or does it just go to the Mall of America?
This is John Dillery, Councilmember Nelson. I can respond to that. In the interest of making the route as efficient as possible, the route now just go to the Mall of America Transit Station.
Okay, all right. I give that clarification and then the there's the, let's see, is it the 597? That just serves the west side of Bloomington. I think someone had just mentioned Old Chocopee and Hampshire kind of circles around that area, and then it only goes to the new Orange Line Transit Station off of Lindale. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It's a replacement there. Thanks for showing the slide here. Big change is Route 597 Express is replaced completely between South Bloomington Transit Center, AKA 98th Street Station and downtown Minneapolis. It is replaced by the Metro Orange Line. Which is frequent 10 minute frequency in the peaks, 15 minute midday, big articulated 60 foot buses. And west of 35W by two new local routes. Replacing the 597 branches. 547. Both of these would run during the peak periods, Monday through Friday, but every 30 minutes. And be timed very carefully with Orange Line and other routes at 98th Street Station. 547 replaces 597 branches that started 35W Station and out Old Chocopee Road to the southwest Bloomington industrial area. You see the AM PM arrows in purple. We're extending throughout north of Old Chocopee Road up to the area where Quality Bike Products, 105th Street and several other employers will are located. In the morning, the bus will continue on around the big loop. Auto Club Road, pick up residents, 110th Street, pick up more residents and shuttle them back to the Orange Line and other routes. The other 597 branch is West 102nd Street, not far from Normandale Village. And we're going to have that, recommend that route starting on Highland Greens Drive, west of Normandale Boulevard, by the big apartment buildings there. That's a new piece. 102nd Street straight over to Old Chocopee Road and to 98th Street Station for connections to Orange Line, et cetera. Complete replacement of Route 597 with Orange Line and these new local routes.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Just a quick question slash comment. From what I'm looking at, there isn't a single line that you can go all the way from west Bloomington to east Bloomington. You'd have to make connections. The, the closest would be maybe from what I'm seeing, the, the 539, but that doesn't get all the way over to some significant parts of west Bloomington. Am I understanding that correctly? And that has always been a concern of mine.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson and others, this is partly true. Yes, so the red line on the map shown here on this slide is our completely redesigned Route 539, a good full service crosstown route. Mall of America, Old Chocopee Road, East 98th Street. Same route. 98th Street Station and completely changed west of 35W to become the direct link from Orange Line, 98th Street Station, straight across 98th Street to Normandale Community College and also Normandale Village. One simple route, all the buses doing this exactly the same thing. Very important concentrations of affordable housing around Normandale Village, Normandale Village itself, Normandale Community College, a very important transit destination. And we will do our utmost to time connections effectively at 98th Street Station, South Bloomington Transit Center between the 539 and the other routes I was just mentioning that go down into Old Chocopee Road in southwest Bloomington. Because I agree, it's imperative that we make it as easy as we can to get from east Bloomington to west Bloomington and vice versa. Work of routes has to rely on connections, and that's what we use the transit station for, something like that.
John, John, would you say that the, in the 494 corridor, that that's also connecting east and west of Bloomington?
Oh, Cindy, thank you. Yes, of course, it's, it's not just 98th Street, right. We're restoring a, the 542 in the peaks for key work shift times. That's the purple or the blue route. And the old 542, before we had to suspend it, used to get out of Bloomington and go to Richfield between Lindale and Penn. But no more, since we have good service on the Richfield side. 542 goes straight across American Boulevard, creating first time direct link parallel to 494 all the way across the city. And because it's more direct through American Boulevard Station by South Town. We don't have to end it at Normandale Lakes Office Park, Normandale Lakes, like we used to. But with some new stops and things on that new section of American Boulevard, go all the way out to the edge of the city with Edina on 494 West 78th Street, where there's some other office buildings we haven't served. So 169 to Mall of America. And yes.
Thank you for that explanation, because I think that's critical for people to be able to get north, south and east, west, and I think the east, west has always been the challenge or west, east, whichever direction you're going. The other part is I appreciate you noting the connections between business and residential and shopping, because that's something I continue to hear from people. You know, making sure that they're able to get from their house or apartment to shopping center or something like that, so they can get their things. And one of the things I was struck by in our earlier presentation was, I've known for a long time that we have more jobs than people in Bloomington, but it was a little startling to see that only 9% of people that live in Bloomington work in Bloomington and you know, taking a look at how our transportation system works to facilitate that is important. And so thank you for highlighting some of those connections and keeping an eye on that.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, thank you, Mayor. So I was also going to bring up the question around east and west connections, because that's definitely something that gets brought up when we have these conversations. And I do appreciate the changes made, but it's also, it's not super clear to me. So if you go back to one of the maps with the new routes, let me see which one I was looking at here. There you go, even the concept map there. I, I guess I just have concerns that, that we still are, that there's still going to be a big section of our community that's not being served by these routes well from east to west. And I even think about, I think it's the 542, and it go, that goes along 494. And is there an opportunity even for that route to just like dip down to Normandale College? It's, it's hard to tell from all of these different maps, the specific changes that are being made and the consequences of those changes. And I, just based on what I've seen, I fear a little bit that there's going to be maybe less local service to Normandale College, for example. So like if I lived at, you know, 12th, I, I don't know, I'm just like kind of picking up a random place in like east Bloomington. Like, would it be easy for me to get to Normandale College if I lived in east Bloomington, like kind of in the middle of the city? And so if you could speak to that, and then my second question is, you know, as you made these decisions and continue to finalize these routes. For our city specifically in Bloomington, what would, what would you say were the hardest decisions that had to be made? And are there any drawbacks? Like, are there going to be any negative consequences to the changes in these routes that may not be highlighted in this presentation, but may have an impact? But, you know, as you kind of weigh the consequences, you decided to make one decision over the other?
Sure. Well, I'll start. Sure, um, well, I'll start and then maybe I'll let John come in with some of the details, I would say one of our biggest trade-offs overall was the fact that, um, we actually started this whole process back in the fall of twenty nineteen, and then had to put everything on hold when COVID hit, we were actually only a few weeks away from coming out with our public plan in March last year when everything, when everything hit, and so, of course, that's had some very significant impacts on us and our, uh, planning process as well as our resources, I mean, our ridership has dropped by more than fifty percent, our operating costs have increased significantly, um, travel patterns have changed dramatically, um, you know, where people are still looking to use transit has, has changed, so I'd say just, you know, one of the trade-offs is recognizing that we, um, are going into this with, uh, uh, fewer resources than we maybe initially thought at the beginning, that's why we have the two different scenarios, um, to allow for, you know, if we are able to, um, you know, get additional resources from elsewhere, you know, to be able to have, uh, some things teed up that we would like to do. Um, I think one area that, uh, comes to mind, and I'll let John discuss this a little bit more, but there is one area in Bloomington that would have a, a service proposed for elimination, that's on Ninetieth Street, between Penn and France, um, I'll let John kind of talk through that one a little bit more.
There it is, there's the slide. Councilmember Carter, there are some real tough trade-offs to make in this business because of the fact Chris Cindy rightly pointed out, uh, as a rule of thumb, it's a lot of the universe, you might say, that, uh, I can give you a choice, a frequency on a few routes, and make the connections work as well as I can, and with better frequency, the connections are much easier to do, or I can cover everything, but for the same resources, the frequencies will get a lot less, and it'll be harder to make connections, you may, for instance, run once an hour instead of every thirty minutes, well, we made a conscious decision to run as much service on the key routes here that we felt were the, were the best ridership, well, we saw the best ridership, uh, in the city, we, um, put the better frequencies there, so, uh, five thirty-nine, the red line, for instance, if you're over in east Bloomington and you can get to the five thirty-nine by a connecting route or walking to it, we're putting twenty-minute frequency in the morning rush hour and thirty-minute service most other hours, and better service on weekends on that line, that's where a lot of best ridership's been. On Ninetieth Street is part of the existing Route five thirty-nine, it's in gray there on the map here. Um, there was about eight riders on Ninetieth Street, eight or nine people, and most of them unfortunately are walking distance from Penn Avenue, where our new route proposed on Penn Avenue would take care of them, and that route goes to Normandale College, albeit by Old Shakopee Road, but, uh, there's a pocket of a few riders though, uh, over at Ninetieth and France, there's a few apartments, buildings there, but around it, there's a lot of parkland and wetland and not as much, so we, we, we have some, uh, problems with the, that pocket, uh, if we're able to, uh, eventually bring back the France Avenue five thirty-seven showing in green, it takes care of that pocket on weekdays, but, uh, initially if that route isn't there, it just remains suspended, then that's a gap, and it's, it's a, it's a gap we have to deal with, and I'm listening very carefully into, uh, the, uh, surveys or, and testimony we're hearing from people, we have heard from a few people in that area, uh, that's one of the more difficult trade-offs we had to make. We are, have other opportunities, so the, the new Penn Avenue, Old Shakopee Road, five thirty-six opens up some new opportunities, so if I live over on Eighty-Sixth Street, Twelfth Avenue South, I can take the five thirty-eight, which is on the other slide, but it's the Eighty-Sixth Street route, and that goes right over to American Boulevard Station, there it is in turquoise, and when I get to American Boulevard Station, I'll can time it so I can get that five thirty-six down Penn Avenue to get to Normandale College that way, or perhaps other destinations like Valley West, or the Job Center at Valley West, that's a influence on our thinking, things like that, I hope that helps, uh, understand the trade-offs for you, but.
That does help, thank you, and I totally appreciate the fact that you guys are in a very challenging, uh, position right now, so, so, yeah, please don't take my question as any criticism, um, it's just more of, you know, wanting to better understand, and, and I do appreciate all of the work that you've done putting into this, so, or going into this. Uh, and I have no more questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? I do not see any hands going up. So, uh, Ms. Harper, Mr. Dillery, did, did you get the information or some feedback between our, uh, meeting here tonight, and I know you met with our planning commission as well, did you get the information you needed to, to, to go back and, uh, ultimately ponder a little bit more whether or not you make changes or not, I know it's difficult what you're trying to do here, but, uh, you've at least got the feedback from the city of Bloomington in terms of what our thoughts are and what our concerns are regarding, uh, the proposed changes here.
Yes, thank you very much, and, um, as, as John mentioned, we've been, um, you know, certainly hearing a lot of feedback from our riders as well, and, um, our survey we have on our website is really our main tool that we're encouraging people to use, the comment period closes on February twenty-second, so, um, you know, you know, folks who are interested in, in submitting their feedback, we have a, a public meeting tomorrow, we have another one on Wednesday night, um, so still, still pretty, plenty of chances.
Good, good, I'm glad to hear it, glad to hear it, and excited for, for as long as we've all been working on the Orange Line, uh, to actually, to be in the year when it's gonna open now, it's, that's, that's very exciting, so looking forward to it.
It is, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on, counsel, to item eight point four on our agenda, which is the City Council Issues and Priorities, we, uh, uh, at our first meeting of the year, I, I think we talked about different issues, different priorities, different things that we wanted to see the, uh, staff work on or possibly bring forward as, as items that we wanted to take on as a city, I know Mr. Verbrugge sent out kind of a, a doodle poll to try and figure out, to try and narrow these down a little bit more, because there was a lot of things that were brought up in our first meeting of the year, and now we're gonna talk what our next steps might be for our City Council priorities for twenty-twenty-one, so, Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as the mayor indicated, this is a follow-up from our January fourth conversation, and want to do things a little bit differently than we have in the years past, and for those who are, uh, watching at home, try to, uh, follow along, I'll, I'll try to, uh, make sure that you can see what the council's, uh, conversation was, um, the, the council had twenty-two different items that I identified, uh, going back and listening to the tape and through the notes that I took on January fourth, and followed up by doing a Survey Monkey and asking the council to rate the items, um, as a, uh, important and urgent, or important and not urgent, you know, trying to get a, a feel for, or if they were not important and, and not very urgent, so trying to get a feel for, uh, how council felt about the different ideas that they heard, so that we would have a way to process them and then factor them into a potential work plan, uh, for the remainder of the year. Uh, so, uh, tonight, I'm gonna walk through the presentation real quickly, uh, Grant, if you could bring that up, that would be fantastic. So the, uh, like I said, the council had twenty-two different items that were identified, there's a lot on this screen, so I'm not gonna read through each of the twenty-two, um, but in the course of identify, or working through that prioritization, the council members, um, had a majority indicate that seventeen of them were, uh, important items that should merit some discussion, and so on this screen, what I've done then is kind of shaded out the five that didn't have a majority of council members saying they were important, okay, so we're down to seventeen, and then staff took a look at those and we struck another five, uh, from the list, because these are items that are already in process that staff and, and councils already talked about or working on actively today. So, uh, when it was all done, then we had about twelve items, and five of those items, uh, garnered six votes from councils being important, and so, uh, that seems like, um, a very strong consensus on those issues, and those are around the topics of homeownership opportunities, uh, diversifying our local economy, and, uh, reducing reliance on the hospitality industry, uh, neighborhood commercial nodes, uh, staff innovation and boldness and risk-taking, and, um, uh, doing more to enhance our natural resources, and then the other items that are, uh, there in black, future focus planning, uh, alternative transportation plan, implementation of our Park Sister Mastin Plan, uh, targeting housing resources to those, uh, who are most in need, community center, uh, expanding relation on community partners, and, uh, reviewing TIF again for those who are, uh, most in need. So, we got twelve items here on the list, and, um, trying to figure out how do we process this, uh, included in the packet for councils edification, the work plan that staff has, which, uh, not surprised to council that, um, we have a, we have a busy, uh, year ahead of us, and so you're able to see what's, uh, at the top of the list for the departments in addition to the day-to-day services. Um, so for this evening, following up on this, I wanted to just ask a couple questions and have a little discussion with council, whether there's any clarity about the process of trying to winnow these down, uh, or if there's any questions of clarity about what the issues mean, and, uh, after, uh, after we have some discussion around that, um, I do have a recommendation on how to proceed, rather than trying to sort this all out this evening, um, because we're looking at a strategic planning process that's gonna be more community-based this year and not beginning until probably the latter half of the year, we don't want to let time go by this year without the council having, um, uh, some discussion about, you know, which items are really rising to the top, whether they're urgent issues for twenty-twenty-one or, or things that we want to start getting in motion, uh, for the next, uh, uh, half-year or beyond that, uh, uh, frame, and so I'd like to suggest to council that we do have a mini-retreat in March, um, even if it's just a couple hours to, uh, spend a little bit of time talking about some of the, uh, bigger issues where we don't necessarily have, uh, a, an active task related to it, but trying to figure out, um, you know, what it is that we want to do, and have staff develop some options for how council processes those issues going forward. So I'm gonna stop there, Mr. Mayor, and invite, uh, discussion or questions from council either on that process issue or the, uh, the question about the issues themselves and what they mean.
Counsel, any questions on the process, uh, or, or the issues, we can take them both at once here, uh, the process, we, uh, we all did it, we, we filled out the, um, it wasn't a doodle poll, what was it, a Survey Monkey, excuse me, Survey Monkey, uh, put things into different buckets as to what was urgent, what was important, and down the other end of not urgent, not important, and, um, so that was the process and tried to winnow it down in that way, and then the issues, uh, we had this discussion, uh, the first meeting of the year, but if we need to have further clarification or further discussion about exactly what we're talking about on some of these things, now would be the time to do it. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, um, so I would like to have more clarification around, um, some of the, um, priorities named, uh, relating to, um, housing, and so, we had several, like we had homeownership and that obviously was a top priority for everybody, but I was surprised to see that support for renters didn't make the important list, but we have, you know, target housing resources and review TIF for most in need, which to me is supporting renters, I would also consider that supporting renters is an in-process type of an issue, like we've been doing that in multiple different ways, so I, it just raises the question for me, um, you know, do we have a shared understanding around like what we're ta, what we're really talking about, uh, as we have these kind of broader discussions around housing and housing stability and homeownership for renters and owners?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Carter, I think that's an excellent question, question is, uh, you know, that seven of you could probably look at that Survey Monkey and see, uh, a specific issue and have seven different interpretations of what exactly that issue means for the community, right, and so I, I think it would be really beneficial for the council, again, um, uh, to have some time to walk through these issues and get to a common understanding of, um, what some of these issues mean and what elements of these issues you want to pursue, uh, so, for example, the homeownership opportunities, um, were actually, uh, identified as being the, the most important and the most urgent based on the way the survey turned out, right, well, um, it, there are any number of elements of homeownership opportunities, right, whether it's, uh, having, um, HRA assist with, uh, first-time homebuyers, or, uh, if we have specific, uh, credit counseling to help with, um, uh, folks moving from renter situation into homeowner situation, I mean, there's a, there's a panoply of options there, right, so I think it's good, um, especially given the, you know, the interconnected nature of a number of these issues, uh, to have some time to sit and talk about what it is that you want us to accomplish related to those.
Great, that's really helpful, and, um, and I agree, the other thing, uh, I would be curi, I would, I would like to see, um, I really appreciate the work plan, I thought that was super helpful to just see the, the list of things happening and some things that we had talked about last year that I, I just, I weren't, I wasn't, you know, totally sure where they had landed, and so it was just really helpful to see that all in one spot, the bigger picture, and I'm wondering if we could have, um, a similar bucket or just like a little column for the HRA and Port Authority, so we can see where the things that they're working on are intersecting with our priorities too, and kind of that bigger picture.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Carter, I think that's an excellent, uh, suggestion, and, uh, we can certainly pull that together and put it into the mix.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Martin and councilmember Nelson, councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, just briefly, some of the, the things I was most excited about in here with diversifying the economy, kind of neighborhood nodes, stuff like that, obviously is gonna be, uh, pretty dependent on the direction of our community development department, uh, do we have an idea of the trajectory, um, for, for that position, will we know more by March, or can we be able to do some projections on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Martin, uh, specific to the community development director position, we're actually conducting interviews at the end of this week, and my hope is that we will have a candidate, uh, appointed and in place by the middle of March, so they would actually be starting and, uh, have, uh, a week or two even, uh, as some overlap with our interim community development director Heather Worthington to assist with some of the onboarding.
That's great, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, um, my first item was just clarification, uh, it appears that some of the categories only had like five votes, and I just didn't know how to interpret that it's not important and it's also not, not important, so.
That's correct, um, you know, there's, this is an imperfect device that we use, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, uh, and so, you know, I, I used a little of, um, uh, uh, what, what do you call it, a little, um, uh, interpretive, uh, wisdom here to try and, and land on some way to, uh, coalesce around these, and that was just saying, let's start with where there's a majority of people saying it's important, right, and then, um, and then working our way up to how many said it was important, uh, to try and winnow things down, um, so that's why I say the, the, um, homeownership opportunities seem to be the most important, because there were, uh, four council members who said it was important and it was urgent, I mean, there were, there were two that said it was important, wasn't real urgent, um, but, uh, you know, for, for a good number of the, uh, council members that there's a certain, uh, extra layer of urgency, and it actually had more urgency than any other issue, so, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit of secret sauce, councilmember Nelson, I can't tell you that there was a, a whole lot of, um, uh, data-driven except trying to figure out, uh, what's the best way to present this so council members can follow it.
Okay, yeah, that was the only thing I was just trying to figure out, um, I look forward to, uh, a further conversation, and I think councilmember Carter had a great idea of, um, kind of trying to make sure we understand what all of those things are, because I'm sure, um, we interpreted things differently between them, and I also see some of them can probably be consolidated and, you know, kind of trying to figure out, you know, in addition to what it is, how much resources it'll take to actually work on, there's gonna be different levels of them in there, so, um, I think things will sort of flesh out as we have that further conversation, so I, I support that process as well.
Great, and Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, my, my intent would to be, uh, would be to have, uh, an associating narrative with each of these items, right, so that the council can respond to it in that discussion and say, yes, this is what we meant, or no, it isn't what we meant, and I'll also, um, touch base with the council members who, um, were the ones during the, the meeting on January fourth that specifically identified that item, uh, and, or, or if it was a couple of you to say, okay, what did you mean by that, just so we have a better sense. Just so we have a better sense. Because I, I don't want to put words into anybody's mouth. I think it's good to have the council members just being clear about what, what the intent was. And then what we'll try to do with that narrative is then, then just say, here are a couple of different objectives to go along with it. Is it, is it a research project for the year? Is there a specific outcome or deliverable that we're working towards? And then figure out what the timeline might be or what staff resource might be to move that forward.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess for my part, and you know, looking at this sheet, there's, you know, the probability is that I voted for it. But I, I think as far as expanding on community partners relationships, I could use some greater clarity on to what end, you know, what, what sort of is the, the specific purpose of expanding on those partnerships? Because I, I think, you know, we, we have so many resources, we have so many incredible people and organizations in Bloomington. But I, my worry is that we, we wouldn't be going into it with, with a clear enough expectation of what comes out of it, that we just end up spinning our wheels. And then the, the other comment I would make is, you know, and this is also perhaps because two of mine didn't quite make the cut, but I would just, you know, to the extent that we can, try and find ways to sort of, you know, find ways to sort of incorporate potential opportunities for some of these things in, in sort of other strategies, you know? An example for me is, you know, as we think about homeownership opportunities, diversifying the local economy, reducing dependence on the hospitality industry, and you know, neighborhood commercial node catalysts and things like that. I mean, a lot of that comes down to the resources we have in order to budget, right? So that we're not so reliant on, for example, admissions and lodging taxes. So just, you know, and, you know, homeownership opportunities too, to me, a lot of that is ensuring that folks can make the, the transition from renting to homeownership, which means ensuring that they're able to build the equity and that kind of thing. So, you know, to, to the extent possible, I think making those connections is going to be, I think, really, really critical too, so that we're not unnecessarily duplicative or having, having more people than need to be working on the same thing.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, thank you. I will tell you that I, I had to resist the urge a little bit to say, oh, we're already working on this, or we're already working on that with a number of these items, right? Because I think there are a few of these where we could have, we could have readily done that, you know, with the homeownership opportunities, we have a number of programs through our HRA that, you know, I could just say, oh, well, we've already, we've already done that. But there was something about that topic that resonated with everybody, right? And so I think it's important that we pull the string a little bit and see exactly what it is that people are thinking about. So, you know, I, I appreciate the comments and to the point of trying to move forward on some of these things, even if they didn't rise to that level of importance that the council members were trying to discern. I, I think one of the common themes is these things, back to the point of Councilmember Carter's, is that there's a lot of interconnectedness here. And a lot of these are already, if not woven into tangential to some of the work that we're already doing. But I, I want to get at the essence of what the council was trying to get at with their comments of January 4th and see if there's a little bit more that we could be pursuing.
Anything additional, council? I do think a, a Saturday morning in March, I think, would be helpful and give us the opportunity to flesh some of this out a little bit and, and have a better idea of what we're talking about and, and also to consider staff capacity, as we've talked about, as I've talked about the last couple of weeks here, we've got to make sure that we, if, if we're going to try and take something out, we've got to make sure that we have the ability and the, the capacity to do so. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just want to add, I, I think what Councilmember Carter said was valuable. My lens was, is it's council strategic priorities with strategic, my addition. So when I looked at some items such as tobacco-related policies, that's already going to be in front of us in March, I recall. So it's not really a strategic item, you know, that, that's kind of the bread and butter of what we do. But homeownership opportunity and some of the other items that are highlighted here are strategic items, they're going to take a longer period of time really to work through and understand what it is, how it is, when it is, and how it would be financed if, if it is that. So that, that's the lens for what it's worth that I used. And, you know, I, I, I think it's a good list. It does need some additional clarity so that everybody is on the same page. But with respect to homeownership opportunities, I think we've all noted that we have a lack of initiatives with those, with that specific item within our city. We don't have a facility within any of our services in the community to help foster homeownership opportunities. So I think that's an exceptionally important one. The neighborhood commercial nodes, we've talked about that, and I'm just going to add, you know, about priorities and, you know, kind of take that in context of all commercial development, you know, get it back into that framework, if I know I'm being plugging my own idea here. But I think that would help because it's not a standalone issue in my view. It's an integrated issue and was noted, it's part of a couple of different areas. It's part of the gateway, it's part of Lyndale. So we've got some Penn and American properties in it. Let's, let's integrate those. So thanks for the time, that's my comments.
Thank you, councilmember. So council, if, if everybody is comfortable, I, I believe Mr. Verbrugge might have floated this idea to us in, in either emails or phone calls about a possible Saturday morning retreat, and I think we will move forward with that because just to, to get, to get our arms around this a little bit better, I think it's something we have to do and it's just something we have to do, we have to get to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll work with the council secretary and see if we can't have it nailed down by the end of this week.
Very good.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that? Sounds good. Let's move on to item 8.5 tonight, where the council is being asked to consider support for a new League of Minnesota Cities policy on new development fees for street infrastructure. And Julie Long, I think from our city engineers department, and Shane Rudling. Shane, I, I warned you in the past, you got to get earlier on the agenda, so we can see you sometime before 10 o'clock at night. But Julie and Shane, thanks for being here and sticking out with us, sticking it out with us this evening, and let's go with this, please.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Got a short PowerPoint on, on this item, just to frame it a little bit. So this is item 8.5, Consider Support For The League Of Minnesota Cities Policy On A New Development Fee For Street Infrastructure Only. What this, this, this policy has been brewing for a couple of years, and even in Bloomington, or as early as 2017, we addressed it in some of our legislative policies. But really, it came out of this decision between Harstead versus the city of Woodbury, which the Minnesota Supreme Court decided that the state statute does not provide the authority for cities to impose, impose infrastructure fees to fund road improvements for developments. And so the Bloomington had never done that before. Typically, the way that, that works in Bloomington is, you know, when it was built, those street improvements were assessed back to the developments based on the time that development went in. And as street reconstruction happened for commercial projects in particular, a development deal was negotiated at the time that the big development went in, and an assessment was typically part of that deal. The issue is, is that now redevelopment is happening, secondary development, a second wave of development decades later, and an equitable way to apportion those costs onto those developments, it does, doesn't exist, and some cities looking for these street impact fees. And so our previous legislative policy in response to the, to the first kind of whiff of the Woodbury decision that we got in 2017 was, we, we added some language in the previous legislative policies such that it will allow cities to defer special assessments of public infrastructure for phase three developments, meaning another way to, to do it would be to actually especially assess for these projects, charge the, the developments and put the special assessment in place and then just allow a deferral until the development actually happened. So it was a different way to do this, so this is something we've been thinking about for a long time. We took that policy out in 2020 just because the issue wasn't active, and we endeavor to try to keep our legislative policies to one of the things that we think are actually going to make a difference and not have a, we used to have a 30 or 40-page document for legislative policies, and, and we tried to slim that down in, in recent years. So there's a bill that's moving, actually now it has bipartisan support HF 527, and it filed its companion 277, that would allow cities to impose a street impact fee for developments when they subdivide. It's only for streets, not for other infrastructure. It's different from a special assessment, it's a fee, and it doesn't mean that the project actually gets built at that time. So one development comes in, they get charged this standard fee, and then a city could kind of save up for the develop, you know, to do the project at the correct time. So the bill language, this is the meat of it, I don't know if I need to go in and read that, but it's based on subdividing the property. Again, bipartisan support, so it has a chance to actually pass this year. One of our Bloomington delegation members, Representative Elkins, is an author and has been out promoting the bill. LNC recently requested us to support it, be a resolution, and that's what you've got on the, on the agenda for tonight. It doesn't mean that these fees would go into place in Bloomington, important nuances would have to be decided. For example, you know, some developments, and just think about, you know, Sam's Club or Home Depot, and all those developments went in a while ago, but they paid, you know, a fair amount at that time to improve American Boulevard. So they've kind of paid their way. So, you know, how those situations would be handled, you know, if they needed to subdivide, you know, split off a small lot for whatever, a convenience store on the corner or something like that, we'd all, we'd all have to engage and talk about how, how that would, how that would work. And so supporting this doesn't mean that this goes into place in Bloomington, it just allows Bloomington to do it at a future, at a future time. And so there's a recommendation to pass a resolution to support the legislation and in line with a lot of other cities that are, that are doing it in support of the League's request in their policy. And along with myself, we've got Carl Keel, the Public Works Director, and Julie Long, the City Engineer, available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions on this? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to my questions, just, I, I think the city manager, mayor, and most of my colleagues know, and just make sure that the public knows as well, that I served on the Builders Association Board of Directors back in the 2015, 2016 area that is now known as Housing First Minnesota. And so I was actually involved a little bit in the Harstead case against Woodbury, the Builders Association, was involved there, wrote an amicus brief to the Supreme Court on that issue and did some other things there. So I've been involved in this issue, and I am also currently serving on the Housing First Minnesota Board of Directors this year. Again, they have a policy of bringing back past presidents of the association, so they have some continuity. So I just, I thought it was important just to disclose that so everyone knows, you know, that, you know, that background that I have and, and experience with this issue. Just a couple of clarifying questions. I did ask this by email earlier, but just want to ask it again publicly. Bloomington has not used street impact fees in the past, is that accurate?
Yep, that is, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, yes, that's correct.
So, and current law allows for a city to have a developer pay for street improvements that are related to the project, is that accurate?
Current law allows cities to assess for those improvements, yes.
Okay. And so is it typical in a development, if the roads coming into that development need to be reworked, that as part of the development agreement, that the, that that is a cost borne by the developer?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, that, that's correct. It's typical, although, especially with redevelopment and the council and Port and HRA's priorities, every development deal is different, but on your run-of-the-mill development, if you will, that's normal. And where the line is drawn on, you know, where the public improvement starts and where the private development starts is a bit of a negotiation at times as well, depending on where the Houston's line, things like that.
Makes sense. And so in reading through the language of the law, it looks like this would allow for a collection of fees for future road improvements that aren't directly related to the project, but maybe are based on just overall growth of the area? Is that sort of what this is trying to get at?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, yeah, that's correct. So Feltip's a good example, actually, because we did extensive traffic studies out there in the past, which have been updated. And based on, you know, all the engineering that goes into projecting traffic through an intersection, we could count literally the cars and percentage of load on any particular intersection based on the projected, projected or existing development out in that area. So you've got a certain amount of background traffic, that's the city, but we could say, okay, if, whatever, the Ramada site develops into an office building or something like that, they're going to, they're going to create load on that intersection of whatever it is, 5%. And because of all the projected load out there, we have a $10 million improvement, so they should pay 5% of that $10 million improvement through a street impact fee. Now, maybe we don't need to do that project next year because that development isn't going to overload the intersection, but at least we'd have that money sitting in the bank to be able to do that project at some point in the future when, when it's necessitated. It more evenly distributes the cost of those developments, because what currently happens is occasionally in cities, the, the last one, the last development in that breaks the intersection is the one that gets hit for the cost, because you can say, hey, you know, the, the intersection works just fine today, it flows fine, but when you build this, whatever, Costco or something, you know, it's going to push the intersection to a level of service that's not acceptable for anybody. Therefore, you, Costco, should pay a big bill for that improvement. And this development fee approach is a more equitable way to apportion that cost and say, okay, Costco, you should only pay 5%, we're going to do it now. And those other developments that have paid into the fund through the years have already done that, and now we have the money to do it, and Costco, you, you, you're only going to pay your fair share. So it takes a bit of the negotiating out of it.
Okay. And, and I appreciate the examples you're bringing up. I would just note that Harstead was a residential development, not a commercial project. And, I mean, I think the fees per lot were about $7,500, so that was a fee to new residents in the community that they had to pay. On top of that, and I know one of the concerns of this council has been affordability of housing and, and adding, you know, thousands of dollars to, you know, price that someone has to pay for a new house is a little bit. has to pay for a new house is a little bit difficult in there. Commercial projects may be different. So I guess, you know, one of the things, knowing sort of the history of where this was at even last year, is I know it was being discussed more as part of a global look into housing and some of the things like that. If this, you know, personally, I don't support this, but if this is something that the council would like to move forward with, I would request or urge that it be modified a little bit, the resolution, to note that it should be part of a larger discussion of things, particularly because, you know, these have been used extensively in residential projects, and they create a fairly significant cost burden for those new residents to pay for some infrastructure. And, you know, there may be similar to what we did with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, recognizing a need, but then working with the builders and developers to find ways to make and help those projects continue to go forward, I think is a much, probably a much better solution in the long run for everybody. And I think from my understanding, having spoken with Representative Elkins about this last year, was kind of the direction that he had been going, I thought it was, frankly, I thought it was very wise, it made sense, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers?
Mr. Rudling?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, so absolutely appropriate, and we recognize, the staff recognizes the cost to the developments, and of course, Bloomington mostly built out on the single-family residential side, but certainly taking note of the interest of the council to promote homeownership. And so, you know, we're taking that, we're noting that, and looking at ways that we can do that, particularly in condos, because, you know, our, our single-family housing stock area is built out. But as it relates to, you know, putting the cost on the new development versus other areas, it's, you know, we went through this with, and we continue to go through this with sanitary sewer improvements. It's the kind of age-old question, do you charge the development that's coming in to pay for the sewer that needs to be upgraded? But everybody's using that sewer, existing development and new development, be it single-family residential or multifamily or office or what have you. The same thing is true with streets. Do you charge the new development, or do you absorb that into the property tax levy and charge the residents for those improvements? So, you know, it's, I think it's always about finding the right balance and making the fees appropriate and making sure that you're not inequitably, you know, hitting one component, existing residents and new development. So again, this would not say that the city of Bloomington has to do this, it just says that they could, and we're open to changes to the resolution, of course.
And Shane, I appreciate that, and, you know, I think that Bloomington has a long track record of being fair and equitable, and, you know, certainly in my time in the council, has been very open to working with all of the stakeholders to come up with something that works for everybody, and I really appreciate that with the approach for Bloomington. I'll be candid, I haven't seen that in every other community, and I know that there are worries about this proposal because of that, and doing it sort of by itself gives a lot of power to some cities that had put a lot of those costs, in my opinion, fairly and equitably, onto new home purchasers and created some significant burdens there. And so I just don't want to get back to that situation again, and, you know, I don't see that happening in Bloomington, that's not my concern. My concern is supporting something that, one, I don't know how related it is to Bloomington since we've never used it, if it's really that critical for us, and two, there was some, somewhat misuse of these items, and, you know, that's where I'm at. I'll let my other colleagues share opinions, thoughts, questions, but just wanted to provide some background, since I had been engaged in this issue for a number of years.
Counsel, additional comments? Councilmember Lowman?
Yeah, thank you for the, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for the clarity on some of that issues, as it relates especially to the housing piece. You know, certainly I have an interest in condos in Bloomington and expanding that homeownership opportunities. So what I would say is, you know, certainly letting different cities have the opportunity to make this decision, you know, how it's written now in terms of authorized cities, I can support that broadly. When it comes to Bloomington, I would like to have a much more in-depth conversation. You know, certainly I've heard the comments of Councilmember Coulter before in terms of home rule, that idea of having us be able to make our own decisions as council. I do think it's a tool that cities broadly should be able to utilize. Whether or not Bloomington should be able to utilize it, I'm not sure that, that's another whole discussion. But, you know, it's, you know, it's fee, tax, same thing. So, but yeah, I can support this moving forward, but when we get ready to have this conversation in Bloomington, I'd like to have a more detailed conversation.
Councilmembers, others?
Mayor, I'd be happy to move this.
I just wanted to say, Councilmember Nelson, I appreciate, I know you've been working on this for a long time, and I will say, it's been around a lot longer than even you've been working on it, and I've been involved in city government, and all of us have. This has been around for a long while, this topic, this, this controversy about who should pay for the new development, the infrastructure development when a new development comes into their, into the community. I think it's been talked about since the, since the 70s, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess I have always, I would agree with Councilmember Lowman and yourself, Councilmember Nelson, when it comes to specific use in Bloomington, yes, we want to have that conversation, but I think Bloomington probably had this conversation back in the 1970s, and honestly, I don't know how it, how it worked out. But what I would like to do is be able to, to make it clear that in other cities across Minnesota, that I would like to stand with and support the work that they need to do, that the costs of new development are borne by the new development as opposed to borne by the taxpayers at large. And it's just, it's just a philosophy that I have. I think that, yes, it's the cost that is ultimately passed on to the homeowners, but there is a developer in there and somewhere in the middle that's benefiting from all of this and is making, making a profit based on all that is being provided to their development and what they're getting out of the development, and then they're being able to sell onto their, onto the residents. And I think it's important to note that it's, yes, it's the infrastructure, but it's also, like all of our fees that we charge within the city, it's not just the nuts and bolts stuff, but it's the work that goes behind it as well. It's the, it's the administration, it's the planning, it's the, it's the prince, I mean, it's everything that goes in behind it as well. And so I agree, I'm having a hard time envisioning where we're going to use it here in Bloomington, unless we get to a redevelopment, as Mr. Rudling proposed or talked about in terms of a commercial redevelopment. That being said, I think it's something that we should be supporting here in Bloomington based on, based on our long affiliation with the League of Cities, based on our affiliation with and partnership with other cities to make sure that we get to a good policy point in terms of how it relates to cities. And I just think this is something that we ultimately should support and have the discussion when, if and when it comes specifically to Bloomington. So Councilmember Lowman, you had talked about a possible motion, are you willing to make a motion here?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move to approve a resolution in support of legislation that would authorize cities to collect infrastructure development fees to fund street improvements for new developments.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman and a second by Councilmember Coulter, was that you, Councilmember Coulter? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six, one. Thank you, thanks Sean, for that discussion on this. I think it's, this is, it's an old discussion, but it's an intricate, an intricate one as well, and so I appreciate your point of view on it, and I appreciate the back and forth and your perspective that you bring to it, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Mayor, can I just make one last quick comment on this?
Please.
So I just want to thank, I know Representative Elkins has been very engaged in this, and when I do read the language, I think that has worked to address some concerns from builders and developers with regards to, there's language that there has to be a nexus to the project, that has to be put into separate funds so that it can be tracked and it's a transparent process. I know that was a lot of the concern, particularly in Woodbury, that, you know, they took this $7,500 per lot, and who knows what project it was used for, and like they're just, you know, we're spilling up a fund so we can take care of roads in the future, and I do think that there's been work to make sure that that practice doesn't happen anymore. So, you know, again, I just personally think this should be considered in a bigger context, but just wanted to say that so people were aware that some of those issues are being addressed.
Appreciate that, and always appreciate the work of Representative Elkins, he takes the thoughtful approach more often than not. That'll bring us to item 8.6 on our agenda, our City Council Policy and Issues Update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and following the vein of our legislative discussion that we just had, just a heads up for council that one of our legislative priorities for this year has been seeking a sales tax exemption for construction related to fire department rebuilds. Our next fire station, number four, is scheduled for replacement, and asking the legislature to provide a sales tax exemption on those construction materials is consistent with the, an exemption that's been given to many cities across the state of Minnesota. Cities have been advocating that the sales tax for government projects just be abandoned altogether, but it's a pretty significant number for the state, on the order of about $30 million a year, and so the legislature tends to handle these on a case-by-case basis. For the taxpayers of Bloomington, if we go forward with the fire station replacement project, it's on the order of about $250,000, so it, you know, it's real money. And we have a hearing this week in both the House and the Senate, so we will report back after we've had those chances to appear before the respective tax committees.
Anything further, Mr. Verbrugge?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, does anyone have anything to bring forward on item 8.6, City Council Policy and Issue Update? Seeing no hands up, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to adjourn this evening. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven, zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, good discussion this evening, good meeting, thanks to the staff, thanks to everybody tuning in. It's already six below, make sure you keep your water running so you don't freeze your pipes like I did over the weekend, and have a good weekend, everybody, stay safe, thanks.
Good night, folks.